Welcome to the St. Tammany Parish Zoning Commission Meeting of Tuesday, June the 4th. Will Clerk please call a roll?
Seager.
Here.
McKinnis.
Here.
Truxillo.
Here.
Dougherty.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Troncoso. Milligan.
Here.
Arsomont.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Ocardo. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, announcements, please silence all phones and electronic devices. If you disagree with any decisions this commission makes, you have the right to appeal it to the council. Speaker cards, if you wish to speak on any item, you must fill out a speaker card there over here on my right, and turn it in to staff and they'll get it up here to me. Public speaking, ten minutes each side with a five-minute rebuttal, and you're welcome to either stay or exit the building after your case is heard. Please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Seager and the pledge by Commissioner Narcisse. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty and glory of this day, for the sunshine and the rain, both literally and figuratively. We pray that you continue to bless those that serve the public and ask that you guide them as they endeavor to make St. Tammany a little bit like heaven here on earth, always mindful that the greatest resource of our parish is we, the people. We ask that you guide us tonight, that we might act in the best interest of our parish in all of our endeavors. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, remembering always the amazing grace you've granted this parish. God bless St. Tammany Parish. God bless the United States of America. Amen.
Our blessings is in the flag of the United States of America and to the Father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners, can your packet where the minutes from the May the 7th meeting? Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review them. I'll accept a motion on those, Commissioner Arsomont.
Yes, I move that we accept the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Arsomont to accept the minutes as published. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gaines. Please vote.
Motion to accept the minutes as written carries.
Thank you. Ellen, we have any postponements?
No requests, no.
All right, thank you. Public hearings, we'll go on down to appear, appears. Zoning change requests, applications for the proposed change of a zoning district, and those are listed on the agenda. All right, the first item will be case 2016-149-ZC. It's a major amendment to the Deer Crossing Plan Unit Development subdivision located on the southwest intersection of Interstate 12 and Louisiana Highway 1085 across from Perilou Road, Madisonville, Ward 1, District 4, 23.28 acres. Petitioners Paul Marone, and the owner is Deer Crossing LLC. It's Council District 4. Staff?
For everybody. So the request before you is a major amendment to the PUD. This PUD was established in 2016, and the applicant obtained preliminary approval in 2016, then again in 2017. A condition of the PUD approval and preliminary approval were no cut buffers along Interstate 12 and Highway 1085. In between the time that they obtained a unlimited work order and filed for a final, the buffers were cleared due to the establishment of an Energy servitude. To our knowledge, the parish was never made aware of this servitude. The PUD plan is, and really the preliminary plan is really contingent upon having these buffers here, and the reason that this case is before you is the major amendment to the PUD. There's a section in 125 that states, "The Planning Commission shall review whether subdivision plans meet the minimum requirements and shall consider whether the plans ensure and conform to the best interests of public health, safety, and welfare." "The Planning and Zoning Commission shall reserve the right to stipulate any reasonable additional requirements for subdivisions, and these considerations may include but are not limited to recreational areas, general street design and construction specifications, buffer zones and screening, and lot designs and configuration." The planning department was last submitted a planting plan which consisted of an eight-foot buffer and hedges and an eight-foot fence. We have not submitted comments back to the applicant in regards to that, and I believe the applicant is still working to come up with a resolution for you all tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Paul Marone, on behalf of Deer Crossing LLC, which is the developer of this project. As you know, this matter has been on your planning agenda and on your zoning agenda now for a number of months as we try to work through this issue. On your planning agenda, we're at final, so the infrastructure is in, but we needed to come up with a resolution of this buffer area, which I hope that we can do tonight. To give a little bit more background and detail on the situation from what Ms. Cook just gave you, so as she mentioned, we received PUD approval in 2016, and with preliminary approval also being granted at that time. At that point in time, we had on our PUD plan a 50-foot no-cut buffer along the interstate and along 1085. The buffer along 1085, except where it meets the interstate, is still there and is a no-cut buffer. The buffer that is along the interstate is gone. It's still green space, but it has been cleared. So what happened to the clearing of that buffer? It was not my client that cleared that buffer, but if you've driven I-12 in the last several years, you see a very large Energy transmission line that comes from Tangier Bahoa Parish, crosses the interstate, and comes into St. Tammany Parish, right in front of my client's property. As we were in the process of developing the site, Energy approached our client, my client, and said that they intended to bring the line through. We said that would be detrimental to our development. We asked them, we, everybody lawyered up, we went back and forth, but ultimately, as you probably know, Energy as a regulated utility has the power of expropriation. So in the end, despite our best effort, there was really nothing that we could do to prohibit them from taking the property and putting in their line, which they have done, which has led to our buffer being cleared. So we come to you tonight after much effort to try to figure out, what do we do with this buffer? How do we try to make it better than it is today, knowing that we can't bring it back to the way it was before because of the Energy servitude through the expropriation? First, it may come to mind, you may be asking, well, did you talk to Energy about planting in their right-of-way? They have a very large right-of-way there. Can we, you know, can we have some area along the edge to plant? We did pursue that, and we were told categorically, no, can't. We thought we had something worked out where we could limit the encroachment into the servitude and the height of the plants that we would plant, and we had good progress with Energy's local representative, but as it went up the line, when we tried to get something in writing from them, they came back and said, no. Could not, could not do that. So, went back to the drawing board, worked with staff back and forth through a series of fences and different issues to try to figure out, what do we do there? Had some discussions with Ms. Sidon, the councilperson as well. And originally, we had proposed an eight-foot fence along the property line for screening and for noise abatement. The staff was never comfortable with that, Ms. Sidon was never really comfortable with that, and ultimately, there was a desire to have some type of planting area there. So what we have come back with and what we are going to present to you this evening is a combination of that fence and a planting area. So on the modified plan you have before you, we are proposing along the rear of each of these lots, which are lots 19 through 41, we are proposing along the back line, an eight-foot planting area. Now, in that planting area, we are proposing to plant screening plants. On the planting area exhibits you have, we propose a variety of sweet viburnum, wax ligustrum, and sweet olive with 10 feet max width and 20 feet max growth. We're proposing four of those on each of the lots across this entire span. Because of the survivability of these plants, we will be proposing a performance obligation, because if we plant these plants today, the likelihood is they will not survive through the summer. So we want to make sure that we have the ability to work with staff so that they have good survivability, but that you have the assurance that we'll fulfill that obligation. And so we're proposing a performance obligation along those lines. In addition to the eight-foot planting area, which will be a servitude, which will be on the final plat, it will run, that servitude will run in favor of the homeowners association and in favor of the parish, and it will require the plantings that I'm mentioning. On the inside of that planting area, so you've got the Cleco servitude, you've got this planting area, we are then proposing on that eight-foot line to have an eight-foot opaque wooden fence, the entire stretch. That will be constructed by the developer. Again, we will post a performance obligation to make sure that that is done timely and will be in before the homes are constructed. So at the end of the day, what you will have is a fence of eight feet, then an eight-foot area of planting, then the back lot line. You may ask, why that configuration? That was a point of discussion as well, as to how best to configure that. And it was our belief, and I think ultimately the staff was comfortable, there are pros and cons of doing it both ways. Do we take the eight feet out of the lot? Do we put the fence along the north side and have the eight foot inside the lot? Our belief was, there was a better chance that these plants and the screening and the buffer that we're proposing will do better if it is not within the fenced backyard. Our fear was that if we put it within the fenced backyard, it would be too easy for a homeowner, even though this is for their benefit ultimately, for that homeowner to make the decision, you know, I'd rather a soccer goal there. I'd rather a playhouse there. And next thing you know, we've got a buffer area that is very important, not just to the parish, but to anybody that's driving along that stretch of I-12. That's been cleared up. So it was with that in mind that we felt the best sequence would be to have the buffer area outside of the fence. So buffer and then the fence. There will be language on this plat also that will give the right of enforcement and obligation for repair and maintenance of both the fence and of the plantings, not only to the individual homeowners, but also to the HOA. So the HOA has the ability to come in, to maintain, to replant, and to fix that fence if it becomes necessary. And they have the tools to be able to carry that forward into the future. I believe that those are, oh, there is one more item that is also on the plat, and that is, these are some construction materials that we are mandating and would be part of the PUD approval for the homes on these lots. And it has to do with the noise issue. And so the homes will be built, on these lots will include double-pane windows and solid foam core fiberglass rear exterior doors with double-pane glassed lights, as well as fiberglass insulation in the exterior walls on the rear of the house for further sound buffering and protection of the residents in these homes. That language is a note on your plat. The other items that I've mentioned tonight are also noted on your plat and/or on the planting plan that has been submitted as well. So I know that's a mouthful. It's been a long journey to try to get here, to try to find some workable solution. We believe this is a good solution. I believe Ms. Sidon is comfortable with this solution, and we respectfully request your consideration to amend the PUD, to incorporate each of these terms into that approval so that we can assure that they are delivered going forward. Thank you for your consideration this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor of this? All right, we'll go to the cards that I have that are against it or either aren't marked. I've got one that's not marked. Erin Poole?
Good evening. I am here on behalf of, I'm a property owner. I own the adjacent property.
Speak up a little bit.
I own the property that is next adjoining, that butts up next to the development, and there were culverts put in that was unbeknownst to me. I had no knowledge of any construction or activity going on. And so it's a problem, because the water, you know, is coming onto my property, so.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay.
It just wasn't approved. I didn't know anything about it. Nobody contacted me. Nobody gave me any knowledge or...
Well, this thing's been going on for a number of years.
Right, but I didn't know about the culverts going on my property. I thought that it was going to go onto the 1085. What?
Okay, thank, yes ma'am.
If I can just add, I'm Kay Carrier, and if I...
Get a little bit closer to the mic.
Thank you.
I'm Kay Carrier. I'm one of the enforcement monitors. And if I can just add to what Ms. Poole said. She does not live in our area, and the many acres that she has and the many properties that Poole has, she was not aware of this change being made. She was never contacted. She never gave it approval verbally or in writing. And with these culverts going onto her property whenever there's excess rain, and in turn, because her property is high, it now then goes onto the homeowner's property on Hayno, Hayno Extension, and several properties along 1085. You know, they're overflowing onto our property, which goes against Louisiana code. That's all we wanted to say.
Okay.
And I might add that Energy contacted me, and they went through the proper chain of communication to notify me to put the power line that Paul Marone was just speaking of. And they contacted me and talked to me about it, even though it was going to happen, but they did it, you know, in the right manner. And they, you know, common courtesy. And these people that are doing this development, they know who I am, and they know that I own this property, and they should have very well contacted me to tell me that they were going to be going onto my property and, you know, changing the infrastructure, if you will, so.
And putting her property and her business and her family...
Well, it's just not right. I should have been notified, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
That's just all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Banera? You didn't mark whether you're for or against, so I'm against.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, let me get him. I'm just going to add to what the ladies had just told us about, told you guys about. I have some handouts that show the property overlay, bird's eye view, if you will, and I have sketched on it the path for the flow of the water and where it's heading toward our area so you can get a better feel of what we're talking about. The second set of handouts are photos that I took during the May 10th rain event that we had recently. I believe we had about five to six inches of rain within, for the day, I guess. I don't remember the duration of it. And there's a site map that has the numbers to the photos, so you can see where the picture was taken along that route. So you can see what occurs when we get these rain events. And the reason why this all came up is, we've been having a property since, well, before Katrina. We built right at Katrina, had no trouble with flooding or anything. About four years ago, with a rain event, I don't recall which one it was, but I ended up getting 10 inches of rain in my barn. Subsequently, from that time forward, there were two other rain events, which one of them was when we had, I think, 12 inches of rain in the day or 16 inches of rain. It occurred again, and then there was a third time where it happened. I don't know the dates for all of them, but I know one was in 2021. So as you're looking through those documents, you'll see where the two culverts are on the west side that are dumping onto Ms. Poole's property, and it just tends to flow to the west. And you can see that my, the second page where the red arrows, that's showing you the flow, the natural flow of the water. And you can see 1085, which is at the lower end where the red lines are going. If you turn to page three, where I have the defective firm flood map, the purple area is what they're calling is the flood zone. And that area, the reason I put this into the map, if you refer back to the page before, and this page, that purple pretty much represents of how that water is when the water comes up. My barn that I was telling you about, if you look toward the center of the map, there's a little white rectangle at the corner of one of the properties, a little bit to the right of that blue line that's running across the page. And that's my barn that has flooded three times. And that water line shown in purple is pretty close to what I've seen when those events happened. So Deer Crossing is funneling their water through those two culverts, and I may add that the engineer that did hydrology report knows that this area will flood in a rain event. And they let it happen. When you turn to the next page after the, what is, one, two, three, the fourth, I have my barn marked. You can see where it's located. And those other two circles are other houses that are very close to getting water into them from these rain events. In back and forth conversations with the engineer, Mr. Kelly McHugh, the last email that I received from him, it states, "I would like to, I would like for you to understand that our initial plan was to bring pond drainage outlet to ditch on 1085. DOTD objected to this plan, stating that their ditch could not receive no more runoff that would naturally occur, and they sent the topograph map showing the drainage going directly west." So since the DOTD ditch couldn't handle the water, they decided to put two drainage culverts to flood our area. A second concern is on page two, three, four, page five, is the traffic problem. On the map, I have distances for typical traffic backup, which is at one mile from the traffic circle. And as you can see, crossing over the interstate, you've got 1.3 miles, and more recently, it backs up to 1.8 miles. And that's in the morning, between 7:00 and 8:30. And then in the afternoon, the traffic is back the other way. If you turn to the next page, it shows you to where Deer Crossing, in order to get to I-12, they have to cross traffic onto 1085 and head that route, which is just, is going to cause more traffic. And I know that it's, you know, too late for that, but you would think, I would have thought we would have had a traffic study or something go on for them to come up with that. And to add to it, Perilou Road to the southeast of where Deer Crossing is, the entrance and exit to Deer Crossing is close enough to Perilou Road that we are going to have accidents there. To add to the misery, if I'm coming from Perilou and want to take a left turn onto 1085, if I see a car on the overpass at I-12, I'll have to work to get in front of it. You know, I'd have to gun it. People don't realize how fast those cars come. You know, they're coming 55, 60 miles an hour off of the top of the overpass going that way. And if you're having to look right on Perilou, and then you now have to look left with cars coming from Deer Crossing, there's going to be problems there, I assure you. But that's a second note. My main problem is the drainage. And then, of course, since we're talking about the fencing, we have, they're proposing putting a wood fence inside the prop, inside on the house side.
You've run out of time right now.
Okay.
And you can go with five minutes into your rebuttal, okay? So I'm going to leave it up to you. If you want to hold, let Mr. Marone speak on his rebuttal time.
Oh, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sure.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Sir, can we give him some of the minutes from our other speakers, please?
Pardon?
If you take my time, can we give him minutes from my other speakers?
During the rebuttal.
You're in rebuttal right now. All right, we're in rebuttal right now. Mr. Marone's got five minutes to go to rebuttal and try and answer some of the questions and comments that have been made, okay? Then those of you that are opposed to it have five minutes, okay? That's five minutes total. Paul?
Thank you. I'd just remind everybody why we're here tonight. We're here for one reason, and that's the amendment to the PUD to deal with the buffer. This is not a planning meeting. This is not a decision tonight as to whether we're going to approve this project. This project was approved in 2016. This project went through innumerable public hearings. I met with Ms. Carrer and a group of her residents, I can't tell you how many times. We conflicted deed restrictions. This thing has, it is constructed. I'm not here to ask you, hey, can we build Deer Crossing? Deer Crossing is built. It was built in accordance with the approvals at zoning and planning. Tentative, preliminary, and now we're at final. We're going to talk about a traffic study. He said we should have had a traffic study. We did have a traffic study. You should have been here at tentative. Kay was. Respectfully, if we're going to get into the issues of drainage, and I don't want to minimize drainage, but you should at least have your engineers at the table. But I will say this. The drainage that is going toward Biedeco Creek goes through a natural drain where it has always gone. We did not divert any water, any new water, and... We did not divert any water, any new water, and send it in that direction. We couldn't do that. We did reduce the rate of runoff to that water going in that direction. And we had to demonstrate that through a hydrological study to your staff. Now, when we get to final subdivision approval, and that is an issue, did we build it like we were obligated to do and in accordance with your ordinances? And we will tell you that we believe that we did, and some of the residents may tell you that they don't believe we did, but you oughta have the benefit of being in the right meeting with the right engineers to be able to help you have that guidance. And so I urge you to recognize what the subject matter is tonight. The subject matter is, what do we do about this buffer? And I laid out a detailed plan as to what we think would be a reasonable way to resolve that. We've worked with your staff, we worked with, uh, Ms. Sidon to try to come up with the best possible plan. Look, I will be honest with you. We're not happy with Entergy. We are not happy with Entergy. Uh, the, the people that are affected most by Entergy putting that power line through there is my client. But quite frankly, we could not stop them, and they came through at a time when the project was already in process. So it, it wasn't easy, I mean, the, the infrastructure was, could not be modified to do anything different. You know, it was suggested, well, you know, maybe you could ask the, uh, the zoning commission and, and kind of put doubles in that area. But we can't do that, because we committed to the residents that we would not do that, that we would have single-family residences there. And we're abiding by that, but we believe that the proposal that you have tonight, is it perfect? No, I'm not gonna tell you it's perfect. It's been very challenging to come up with something that, that will be meaningful and that, and that could work to help, one, the noise and the sightlines from the homes, two, the sightlines from the interstate, uh, when we have a very unreasonable Entergy on our doorstep. But we believe this works. The people that we've been working with believe that this is a reasonable alternative. And we ask for your approval of the amendment to the PUD to incorporate these items. That doesn't mean that we won't have another opportunity to deal with legitimate questions and concerns about drainage, but respectfully, that's not tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marone. All right, those of you that were against uh, have an opportunity now to speak again. You've got five minutes total between all of you that want to speak. So be sure that you know where your time is. Who wants to speak first?
Understand. I'm just passing out, uh, a section of the hydrology report that was just mentioned. And if you look at it, sure, they had a hydrology report, but the analysis was just on the subdivision property itself. Sure, they were, they have a retention pond, which is retaining twenty-five percent of the rainwater within a certain amount of hours. They got that covered. But what they're not saying is where that water's going once the retention's finished. So now we have, you guys, three culverts, two in the west, one going to the south, which goes on ten eighty-five. So two-thirds of that water, it's on the twenty-three acres, is funneled down our property line. Oh, and, uh, everybody was wondering, uh, why have we just come forward tonight? That's not true. We've been here numerous times. We've been calling the parish since twenty sixteen or before on these problems that we're having.
Hi, Kay Carrer, one of the enforcement monitors, along with Debbie Flores, one of the other enforcement monitors. For those of you who do not know, we are written into the deed of the property by name, okay? So that's why we have been working on this project since it was begun, probably back in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. So Paul Marone was correct in saying that we have had a lot of communication. The communication that we feel has fallen through has been in getting response from the engineering, getting response from some of the other ones on our concerns. We feel like, to be honest, we've been blown off, okay? We feel like for the thirty-five people who are involved in the Hayno Road, the Hayno Road extension and the Deer Crossing, that we aren't important, okay? That it's the developers that are important. And, yes, we don't have a problem at this point, depending on what the fence looks like, with what Mr. Marone has worked so diligently to get done. We applaud him for that. But on the other hand, we have asked to have the drainage included in this meeting and in four meetings before this, as well as other ones. So this is not a new project for us. The problem is that our homeowners, when it does rain, the mon, the rain and the runoff goes over, um, Ms. Poole's property, and then it drains onto our property. And this is one of the homeowners that gets it the worst.
Yes, I'm at one fifty Hayno, I've been here twenty-five years. I am done with this drainage. I was on the phone yesterday because they were digging the drains, digging the culvert so we don't get water. We get water. And when you look at the way the street's graded, it all grades to the back of the property is where I live. I have been dealing with this seventy, especially since the expansion too, probably with Biedeco. Needless to say, I put about ten loads of mud last summer on my property. I do it every other year. I can't afford it. I cannot afford this drainage. For, uh, for Ida, we never flooded, never. We, we, it was just everywhere. I was lucky, my house didn't get flooded. Needless to say, with the energy thing, we didn't get a notice that we're putting up these poles there and I saw. Cut all the buffers out, get to look at this big leggy pole, ugly pole, and then we get to see and hear I-12 now. I do. I don't know about everybody else, but I know I do. I wasn't informed about it, I didn't get paid for it. I know my neighbor across the street did. So, yeah, it's pretty disgusting that they could get these things out for people that are here twenty-five, thirty years, and y'all not thinking about anybody else, except the cash. Like, I'm like, just done. I mean, I'll flood, my flood insurance is going up, everything. Like, what do y'all expect us to do for people that are here twenty-five, thirty years?
Debbie, what happened? Debbie, what happened to the ten loads of dirt that you pay for?
Oh, it's just flowing, it's floating away. I'm like, it's crazy. It is, and I got a little piece right up front of my property. Carvings came, "You can't cover that, that's wetlands." I'm like, are you freaking kidding me? Oh, no, ma'am, that's a high five if you cover that. My funny though, we cut how many wetlands and put new subdivisions down? We do a lot. And I get questioned because I have a little piece I wanna put mud on? That's a joke. That's a real joke.
So gentlemen, you, and ladies, you can determine that we are very frustrated as a group, okay? From traffic to the sound barriers, to drainage especially, okay? We appreciate having been included and working with Mr. Marone to get the project where it is, but we feel it needs some other tweaks on ways to take care of the retention pond and the drainage and how it goes out in addition to the buffer. So thank you for letting us speak.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's, uh, the five minutes, uh, of the rebuttal. And, uh, I'm gonna close it to the public now and bring it back, uh, to the commission. I've got, uh, looks like four or five commissioners that wanna speak. Bill, I think you were first, this thing's not working a hundred percent right.
I know.
Okay? Paul, please come up. How you doing, sir?
Good, thank you.
Uh, I agree with you about, about one thing for sure is that, uh, this hearing is just for the buffer on I-12. I understand that. And, uh, I have questions too, that, uh, that need to be asked. I'm gonna hold off until you come back here for the planning part of it, because, uh, there's things that I need to understand and, uh, to be able to, uh, move forward on this, okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, but, uh, but you're right. This, this, this meeting is just about the buffer. It's not about, uh, planning anything else. Now, you, you have to come back and talk about the drains, talk about everything uh, that, that's going on in that subdivision. But unfortunately, this is just for the buffer. Uh, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Uh, since we're talking about buffer, Helen, the buffer on ten eighty-five, that's a no-cut buffer, correct? Okay, and how many feet is supposed to be?
If you take a look at the plan that was, uh, that you have in your packet, it shows you the required width of the buffer that was supposed to be in place there, which was, um, shown on this, on a plan that, that you have.
Okay, is it fifty feet?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And how do you measure that fifty feet? Is it all woods, or is it, you know, is it from property line to, uh, highway?
Well, it was, if you could see, it's identified on the plan as a fifty-foot Entergy servitude, but it's, it's from the property line of the property itself, of the development, all the way up to where the lot starts.
Okay, so, so it's not all woods? It's, it's, uh, from the property line to the servitude?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I'm not sure by the expression "all woods" what you're referring to. It's been clear that-
Okay, on ten eighty-five, there's, there's a bunch of trees there. Some of them are, uh, five foot deep, some of them are ten foot deep, some of them fifteen foot deep. So my question is, is the buffer, uh, on that side is measured, is not all woods? Measured from the property line to the street, correct?
The buffer is measured from, from the property line going inside to where those lots starts. I'm sorry if I'm not correctly answering your question.
No, no, yeah, because, uh, I just wanna make sure that, 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 that we understand a buffer. You know, it's not all trees, it could be, it could be just green space and trees, correct?
It's a no-cut buffer, it's identified as a no-cut buffer, and no-cut buffer is no clearing of any sort.
Okay, uh, and since this is just for the, uh, I-12, uh, buffer, I make a motion to approve. All right, motion by, uh, Commissioner Truxilla to approve. Uh, Commissioner Gaines.
Hey, Paul, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just looking in the staff report. It said that they, they felt that a ten-foot fence was appropriate and also a fifteen-foot sound wall. So I'm just curious as to the discussions you had with staff and, and why y'all decided to go with an eight-foot fence and a eight-foot buffer.
So there were a lot of, uh, a lot of iterations and discussions about different components. Um, the, the sound wall for this stretch would, was, it was infeasible. We, we couldn't, we couldn't do that.
Okay.
Uh, the expense, the expense would've been enormous. It's not something that we could've possibly been able to, to, to accomplish. We did look at, um, a larger fence, and at one point, we, we had a proposal with an eight-foot fence and then some, um, additions on top, that would've brought us to ten foot. But in further discussions, that's when it became clear that Ms. Sidon and the staff really wanted to have some plantings. They felt like the plantings would've been better for the fence. If we just had the fence, even at ten feet, they didn't feel like it would achieve, it was not the, the, the best we could achieve. So that's why we, we came back with the plan that is before you, which is an eight-foot fence, but with the additional plantings, uh, on the outside of that, or on the interstate side.
So the staff said that if we, if we approve this, they wanna add the additional restrictive covenants for all homes, additional double or triple pane glass, insulation, stand-up materials, insulation in the walls, requirement of brick, is, is that an exterior facade instead of wood, is that correct?
No, so, well, so there were, there were four, uh, construction proposals that the, the staff originally made, and we have agreed to two of those, which are the two that I mentioned, which is the double-pane windows and, uh, solid foam core fiberglass rear exterior doors with double-pane lights, as well as fiberglass insulation in the exterior walls. And that is part, those, those construction components are part of the proposal.
Okay, but you guys are not willing to upgrade, that just the homes alone on that corridor with a, a, a brick exterior on the backside?
We would, we would ask not, not to have that additional cost, yes.
Okay, what about the use of rigid metal frame connectors interior, in the exterior walls?
We would ask not to have that, that obligation either. Those are the two that we ask not to have, but would, would agree to the other two.
So, uh, the reason why I ask these questions is because obvious, and I know that you guys have been dealing with, with Entergy, and I know that this is a huge pain, okay?
Right, right.
Um, but, you know, our consideration is the health, safety, and welfare of the future residents that are gonna be living in those houses, right? And, and staff recommendation, if they're, if they're proposing all these things, I have to rely on them that they're doing it for the same reasons, the health, safety, and welfare of the, of the residents. It's, it's, it's not really material to us, well, I don't feel it's material to us, whether that increases the expense on the, the cost of the homes along that stretch. I understand that would be something that you would think of with Entergy, right? Um, I, I look at it as this is, this is what's gonna make the people that live there more adaptable to that environment. Does that make sense?
I, I understand, yes.
So, I, I I would ask you to reconsider. I know that we're filed, the final, uh, approval's gonna be coming up. And, and I know we have some other questions as far as drainage and stuff like goes. I'd just ask you to reconsider maybe a couple of those items.
I, I, I don't have the authority tonight, but to your point, we do have another hearing, and I will certainly bring those back to my client.
Absolutely. Okay, with that, I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Seager.
We talk constantly about people building in a flood zone and not being able to legislate them, even though it's in their best welfare of their clients. We cannot legislate, we cannot demand that somebody build a Ray's house. Even if it's in the best welfare and safety and all that. By the same token, what happened to the caveat emptor? If somebody builds a house next to an airport, they know it's an airport. If somebody buys a house next to an interstate, they know it when they're buying it. Why do we have the authority to require the developer that they jump through these things? If people don't wanna buy the houses 'cause it's next to an interstate, they have a right not to buy the house. So I respectfully disagree with, with your assessment of that. Also, um, the, uh, the tree line or the trees, the, the green space on the outside, um, I'm not sure, um, the height of those trees. Uh, you said one was a, a wax, uh, myrtle, I believe. And my experience with the trees that you mentioned is that they're not very dense. Whereas if you planted some type of, um, bamboo that grows twenty feet tall, you would satisfy the staff's request for something that's higher, even though I don't think you should have to do that. It would satisfy that, and it would be thick enough to absorb the sound better than something that's more porous. So that might be a consideration, a, a different type of planting. And I believe there was a second. Uh, Commissioner Gaines, correct?
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. We had, uh, a, a motion initially by, uh, Phil, right.
Yes, sir.
To approve, okay? And you're making a-
Mr. Gaines seconded the motion.
You, you seconded that, okay?
I just had, um, I just said what I wanted to say.
Okay. All right, uh-
I mean, I just wanted to clarify, it's a motion to approve the PUD.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I was just trying to get some clarity on what the motion is, that's just the motion to approve.
You got a microphone?
I was just seeking some clarity on what the motion is, that it's just a motion to approve the putt, this revised putt plan as included in the packet, and was not included in the staff comments.
No, correction, if I'm not mistaken, the request is to approve the fence as well as the proposed landscape plan from Mr. Marone. No. The plan was submitted to us two days ago.
Oh, I haven't seen it. How long has Mr. Marone's comments?
And that's why I want to seek the clarity, because this is going to be the governing authority for the development of this putt, so I think it needs to be very clear what those parameters are.
Can I just clarify what the request is, so that it can maybe help at least with the motion?
Yes.
So, again, um, and I assume that the, that the planting plan, uh, had been provided. But again, what we're proposing, and what is on, uh, the face of the, the putt amendment, is that there will be an eight-foot planting servitude created along the rear of lots 19 through 41. That servitude will run in favor of, will burden the lots, will run in favor of the parish, and of, uh, the homeowners' association. There will be planted within that plup, that buffer area, a variety of either sweet viburnum, wax ligustrum, uh, or sweet olive, maximum growth width of 10 feet, maximum height of 20 feet. Mr. Seager mentioned bamboo. Uh, if it is the wish of the commission, we could certainly add bamboo to that list, because we have no problem with utilizing bamboo. There would be a fence of eight feet, opaque wooden, along the inside of that eight-foot planting area. And the obligation for maintenance, uh, would be with the homeowner, but also with the HOA for the plantings and for, uh, and for the fence. So, that's, that's the proposal, along with the building, the two-building criteria that I mentioned earlier as well, and that are on the face of the plat. So, that's what the proposal is, uh, to you this evening.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Marone, um, if I'm not mistaken, you, in the event that the commission votes, um, in favor of this request, didn't you mention that you wanted to put a performance bond in the event that construction is completed, maybe at this time of the year?
Yes, that's correct, I mentioned that earlier, thank you, Ms. Lambert. Um, to assure survivability, uh, we would post a performance obligation so that the plantings can be made at a time of the year that gives them the best survivability, um, and the performance obligation would assure that that happens. And likewise, for the construction of the fence, we would post a performance obligation, but that fence would be built before the first certificate of occupancy of any homes to be constructed on lots 19 through 41. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Narcisse.
First of all, I do want to acknowledge your concerns in the back. Um, it seems like you have some significant flooding and things like that. However, this is not the meeting for that, because of the nature of what's in front of us tonight. So, I do want to acknowledge your frustration, and I feel for you, you know, I get it. Um, I, I see something else that's, that's here, I know we're talking about the sound, and I'm not a scientist, but I'm looking at a car traveling 80 to 90 miles per hour coming off the interstate with nothing to stop it. That, that's, besides the eight-foot fence and some shrubs. That sounds significant to me. When I, when you drive down the interstate and you see the trees that are 20, 30-foot deep, and they're burnt up because a car hit them full of speed, you wonder what would happen if that's not there. I think the buffer plays a bigger role than just sound dampening. And I don't think an eight-foot fence and some shrubbery is, is significant enough for that. So, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner, uh, McInnes.
Very interesting thought. Had we had 50-foot of no-cut, that would have stopped a tree, most likely. My comment is, um, or what I want to point out is, um, I, I used to live near an interstate, uh, in, uh, Amity, Louisiana, near I-55, and we were half-mile away, and if you sit on your deck, it was a constant roar that you'd hear. And, uh, but luckily, we had a pasture that had overgrown up with, um, with some, uh, actually old Christmas trees, when that was the thing, to plant Christmas trees for sale. And we made the mistake of clearing that pasture, and the noise difference was phenomenal. So, to me, eight feet of shrubs and a, I guess, a wooden fence, it, it's not going to stop much noise. Um, yes, people can decide, it's a good point, they, they know the interstate's there, it's not a surprise. But, but they may be told, when you're selling the house, um, oh, we've made improvements to this home to take care of the noise. But, you know, once you purchase the house, you're kind of stuck. And having rigid metal frame connectors might, they're not going to, um, know, uh, if that, that's been done or not. Um, it, it, you know, once your wall starts shaking, and you've already bought your house, that is problematic. Um, so, I, I either, I, I looked at this, and in my opinion, we either have a 10-foot fence, not an eight-foot fence, and items one through four, like the staff recommended, or we have the 15-foot sound wall along the interstate. And if we don't have either one of those, um, I wouldn't be in favor of this. And I also think lot 17 should be included, not 18 through 42, but 17 through 42, because it is as close to the interstate as 42. So, I would add that as well. So, I know we've already had a, a, a motion and a second, but I, um, I don't agree. I think we should stick to, uh, what's going to be important for this in, uh, subdivision. Thank you.
All right, I've got, uh, two commissioners that have indicated they wish to speak, Commissioner Arsomont and Commissioner Troncoso. The machine's not working 100% right, so I'm having to try and go from memory.
Okay, first, you got a preliminary approval in May? No, you received a tentative approval in May of 2016, if I'm reading this correctly.
I believe it was, I believe it was preliminary that was in May of 2016.
Okay, so, um, and then again, I assume you had to make changes because you had to revise the plan in November of 2017?
There was an amendment in 2017, yes.
And is, was the buffer along the interstate and 1085 part of that overall process? Or was that added at the preliminary?
It was not, it was not part of that process.
It wasn't?
No, no.
When did that come along, when was that?
I forget the date of the servitude, but I believe it was, the servitude was finalized after that date.
Okay, um, according to my understanding, the Entergy servitude was filed and approved in October of 2017, which would have been before the November of 2017 preliminary approval, which means that you were in negotiation with Entergy between 2016 and late 2017. Is that correct?
That was in the late 2016 and early 2017.
Did you receive compensation, did your client receive compensation from Entergy for the servitude that you granted? Because it wasn't an expropriation, they just didn't come in and take it, you negotiated.
Well, they, they threatened it, yes.
Right, threatened it, of course they threatened it.
There was, there was some compensation, and they were, they were prepared to file suit to take it.
Did you contact the parish when that happened?
I did not contact the parish, no.
Okay, so, did the developer contact the parish?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so, no one talked to the parish? Now, I have a question for the staff. It says that a limited work order for clearing and grubbing was issued in March of 2018. Who granted that? Did the parish grant that?
Yes, sir.
It did. So, the parish was aware of this in 2018?
The parish issued an unlimited, a limited work order on March 14th, 2018, due to the preliminary approval that was granted in 2017.
It was after the preliminary approval was granted?
Yes.
So, the parish, and we knew as the parish, that this buffer area was going to be clear-cut, ultimately.
To my knowledge, and from the records that I've read, the parish did not know that this Entergy servitude existed. When they submitted for final, part of the comments to them were, what is this servitude, please provide this documentation?
Right, but it says that an unlimited work order was issued on June 13th of 2018. Somebody had to issue that, and I'm assuming it was the parish, since it's on private property.
Yes, sir.
So, the parish knew that...
Limited to the putt plan?
Yeah, well, well, the putt, the putt plan was appro, preliminarily approved in 2017. This is a, um, seven, eight months later that the parish approved an unlimited work order to clear-cut that buffer.
I don't understand what you're saying.
No.
No, sir.
Well, that's what you're saying, it's, it's in the document.
It's unlimited within the scope of the servitudes that were established on the preliminary approval, and it would still have the 50-foot buffer.
Yeah, but there was already a, a servitude of record from Entergy in 2017, so...
As far as I know, staff was never made aware of that servitude being in existence. We were under the assumption that this putt and the preliminary approval was granted, with the buffers being a contingency of that approval.
Okay, so, basically, at this stage of the game, we're here to determine the final, the final approval of the plan, ultimately, is what we're going to head to, is that, that's correct, right?
On, on the buffer area, yes.
Okay, so, there was consideration, you had liberty to say what that consideration was?
I do not know what it was, no.
Okay, um, has there been lots sold in the subdivision?
No, no, no lots could be sold until final.
Right, so, if there's any changes that are made to the subdivision plat, it won't affect anybody at this stage of the game, is that correct?
Uh, just, just the, just the developer, that's right, there's no lot owners at this point.
Right, okay. I, I, um, I, I just have a statement to make on this thing. I, I know that, you know, things are, you can, you can stand down, Paul, thank you. I realize that we haven't evolved as a parish or state relative to really looking at developments along the interstate system, and what effect that has on people, on the quality of air, the sound. I stood on this property and, on, in the street there, and man, it was like, and this was on a Sunday afternoon, and based on my travels of, of the past month, I've gone, driving to Chicago, the amount of truck traffic on the interstate system these days is outrageous, and that's, I guess that's a good thing, right? But the bottom line is, is that the noise level there is unbelievable. And I stood there, and I watched the trucks passing by, and I frankly couldn't imagine having somebody living in a house that close to the interstate. And, and it's just fundamentally a problem, and, and, and there's been studies, and I've, I've researched this a little bit further, relative to the issue of quality of air, and I know California, okay, they're, they're studying everything in California, right? But frankly, it's a bellwether state, and what happens in California usually spreads across the country anyway. But the bottom line is, is they're studying it, and there's a correlation between houses and people living in proximity to interstates, relative to increase in cancer, lung disease, diabetes, and a number of other nasty things. Um, I know that's, the cat's out of the bag here, we had preliminarily approved this. But we also have the right not to approve this change. We have the right to say, this development is not right now, because now we don't have trees, we don't have that buffer, we don't have the things that are necessary to block the sound. And I, I mean, I can even go further relative to visibility, and looking at trucks, et cetera, and the height and the grade level of the interstate versus the grade level of the, of the thing. So, my vote at this stage is comfortably no. And frankly, I believe that all of the lots abutting the interstate should not become developable lots. Or, there needs to be some other form of development pushing this thing further away, that lot line away from the interstate system. And that's, and that's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Arsomont.
So, obviously, I'm the last guy to talk, and I'm going to make this really quick, because we've been an hour, and we only been on the first case. So, real quick, I do have some questions with the staff. Mr. Paul had come up and talked about the changes to the fence, and also the four items under number 10, excuse me, under number 10. The question I have, if, if y'all were in discussions with Mr. Paul, and they, and he's bringing these changes that seem to be acceptable to staff, why wasn't it changed in the report to where we would know that you accepted those, or did you?
These changes were not acceptable to staff. They were given to us yesterday, and staff told the applicant that we would not have time to review the plan, make comments, or update our staff report.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed, and, and that's, that, that's a concern for me. Uh, but, uh, the other thing is too, is the voices that came up, the, you, you, your voices were heard, so don't think it wasn't, uh, but remember, in the planning section and the planning team, please come back and, and discuss that as well, uh, because I think it's important that we really going to have some interesting conversations when it comes to that stage. Uh, but I would agree, I, I would not approve this at all, but thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Seager, call for a vote. All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion to approve fails.
All right, uh, the next item is, uh, item two, in this case, 2024-3791-ZC. Existing zoning is A1A Suburban District and RO Rural Overlay. Proposed zoning is A1A Suburban District, RO Rural Overlay, and MHO Manufactured Housing Overlay. Location partial located on the west side of Louisiana Highway 1078, Folsom, Ward 3, District 3, one acre. The petitioner is Marcela Centani. Uh, the owner is Wilson Martinez Diaz. It's Council District... The owner is Wilson Martinez Diaz. It's Council District three. Staff?
The subject property is one acre in size and sits on the south side of ten seventy-eight.
Wait, wait a minute. Okay, try it now.
The subject property is one acre in size and sits on the south side of Highway ten seventy-eight. The site is currently undeveloped and per the petitioner's application, they're requesting to rezone the property to obtain the manufactured housing overlay. The site abut's property is developed with single-family dwelling zone A one on all sides except for the southern side property, which is undeveloped. The A one suburban district requires five-acre parcel sizes with three hundred feet of road frontage and allows one dwelling unit per every five acres. If approved, the applicant can apply for a building permit for one manufactured home on the property.
Good evening, sir. And you are?
Good evening. I'm Vincent Centani. I'm here in behalf of Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez purchased this property, I think, two years ago. And it's four acres. There was a, there was a mobile home on the property. He was gonna do some repairs to it, fix it up. It was beyond repair, so he decided it was in his best interest to go ahead and buy a new mobile home. I mean, a, yeah, buy a new mobile home. When he seeked the permit, he had to go through this application here. And he removed the old mobile home. And now he had to apply for this new application. So, the home's been there since nineteen seventy-six. It's, um, I think the power was turned off, which kinda triggered the process of having to go through the appeal, and so that's where we are today. So, he's already purchased the home. He's waiting for it to be delivered upon approval of permit. So, he's seeking approval on the, on the ward today, so he can get that moving. He's living in Baton Rouge currently, and he works here. So, he works for us, and he's trying to move onto this property. There's about a four hundred and fifty-foot buffer of trees, which you don't really see it from the road. And, uh, just, again, he's just waiting for approval so he can get delivery of the mobile home, and then he can move to this area, because he travels every day.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? All right, I've got two cards here.
That was him.
Okay. Uh, one card, Frank Richardran. And you're against, right? You're against?
Yes, sir, I'm against.
Okay.
Well, my name is Frank Richaron. I live in Folsom, seven eight two one nine Oak Ridge Road, Folsom, Louisiana. We own the property that adjoins this property, a, a group of us. And we're part of a group, nearly two hundred of us, living on Highway ten seventy-eight that is and has been opposed to any overlay changes and manufactured homes, trailers, on our property. We've come here at least three times in the last three years to defend that opposition. And it's interesting that we have to keep coming back, but I guess that's the rules. So, we, we tend to do that, and we, uh, we haven't changed our feelings. Our property, as, as I said, adjoins this acreage. I'm not sure what's on the acreage behind us, but, uh, that doesn't change anything the way, in the way we feel about how we feel about these manufactured homes. I wanted to note something on the description of the property. It said the west side of ten seventy-eight. I, I think that might be an error. It's on the south side of ten seventy-eight? Ten seventy-eight has a north and a south side. And this property, as I understood, I wanna make sure I'm thinking of the same property. Make sure that's, that's it. So, maybe someone could confirm that.
It's on the south side.
Okay. Thank you. So, we continue with our plight. We're here. We, uh, we have come back time and time again. We have a group of about two hundred people, as I mentioned. We have ten or twelve here. We have a few watching everybody on TV tonight. And we're still in opposition to this, and we ask that, uh, the zoning commission, please continue to help us maintain the beauty of our highway and all the things that we, we've all lived there. Many of the people that have lived there in that area forty, forty-five years. And we've been able to keep a suburban beauty to Highway ten seventy-eight. I'm not saying that, I, I don't know enough about this development to say what the change would be, but we continue to have to do this over and over again, and we would like some help. So, help, please help us preserve this, and I wanna thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak against? I don't have any more cards, so I'm gonna close it to the public if no one wishes to speak. All right, I'm gonna close it to the public, and, uh, Commissioner Narcisse.
Wasn't expecting to be the first one on this one, but I'll take it. Um, got a question for staff. He's just trying to portion a section of that big?
No, he's not. No, he's requesting a mobile home overlay, a manufactured housing overlay on one acre of the four-acre parcel to be able to place a mobile home on a property. However, there's no request to subdivide the property.
Yeah, I, I misspoke. That's, that's what I meant.
That's okay.
And then, um, my question is for the gentleman that just spoke. If you can come up to the mic.
I gotta warn you, I'm an old man. I don't hear well.
Were you aware that there was already a mobile home on the site prior to him purchasing?
I, I had a suspicion, but I'm, 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 I've never been to the rear of the property, so it's, you, looking at the property, it's wooded, from my perspective, and it's
So.
Not sure of that.
Looks like, looking at these plots and looking at everything here, it looks like it's further back off of ten, of ten seventy-eight. Like, it's not gonna be front-facing and mess with the beauty of what you're talking about, because it still would be that wooded area.
I would say that's a
What's that?
That's a correct perception, I would say, but that, that only, that only is true now.
It's a slippery slope. I get what you're, I get what you're saying.
What's happened in the past is things change. And there's woods there, and it protects the beauty for now, but as, as we move on and grow this area, and we're all faced with that growth, every day, this parish is growing and growing. So, we're trying to protect it. We have the support, I believe, of Martha Casabon. She is our councilwoman for our area. She has defended that ability to maintain this, so I can't speak for her, but I believe she's in that category.
And, and like I say, I, your, your, your plight, your fight is very admirable. But when I look at it, there was already a, a mobile home there that wasn't there, and you're not messing up the density of anything, and it's still gonna be protected by four acres around. I wanna hear the rest of my commissioners, because they might bring up something that I don't see. But currently, I'm looking at it, and I, I don't, because the wooded area is still gonna be that buffer. You're still gonna get that scenic look down ten seventy-eight.
No, I would agree.
I could be.
I would agree, but I, I would, I would look at it from this perspective, perhaps, that we have a rule in place. And we, that's the, the part of our argument, is that this rule, we keep having to defend the rule for no trailers. And it doesn't matter if they're on the front row, the back row, or wherever. We are in opposition to that, and the parish is in opposition because they set the rules.
And once again, I might be
Yeah.
Not hearing something, my commissioners, thank you for your time on it.
Okay.
Yield my time and see what the other commissioners have to say on this.
All right, uh, Leland? Okay. All right. John, go ahead.
So, I wanted to, I wanted to state, I'm, I'm from this area. I, I drive up and down this road quite frequently. You know, from the, from Highway twenty-five up until you get up into almost the Savannah Branch area, there's not, it's all stick-built homes. There's, there might have been a couple of grandfathered in, like I said, the original home there was nineteen seventy-six, but the parish has decided that this area is gonna migrate away from that type of structure and into mostly stick-built homes. The, the MHO overlay, which was, this was all done in two thousand and ten, changed the zoning to allow that further west of this property. So, that's, that's not that long ago that all that zoning was changed. It's, it's already included if, if, to Mr. Richaran's, you know, opinion, there's no other MHO in the immediate vicinity. And if we, if we do set the precedent to allow that, it's going to allow other properties in there to follow that precedent. So, I just think that in keeping with the, the way it's been zoned and the, and the intended use of the property surrounding that, that, that MHO is not appropriate for this property.
Okay. Commissioners, uh, Seager.
I have a couple of questions. One, Ms. Helen, um, there is an existing MHO on this property? There is not. And second of all, um, if we're going to go by staff recommendations like we did on the last case, then we should follow through with this case. The staff recommends that it's consistent with the goals and policies. So, if we're gonna take staff recommendations like we did on the previous case, are we or aren't we? I ask that question. I, um, also, we went to a workshop, this is for the new commissioners. We went to a workshop, and this is a lawsuit waiting to happen. It has not happened in Saint Tammany Parish yet. It is against the law, and it's been upheld in many states, discriminating against manufactured housing. That's not our job. Um, and you're gonna say health, welfare, and safety. It's ha, it's gonna happen. So, it's not our job to also determine tax rules. That being said, in order to facilitate a vote, and I recommend that if this is not approved, that you seek counsel and apply to the parish. You know, you have a right to appeal. The appeals card's right there, and I encourage you to do so. I move to approve, to move this along.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Seager to approve. Commissioner McInnis.
Commissioner Gaines, did you make a motion? Okay. I, I wanna comment, I'm also, uh, live in this district, and it's one of the most scenic roads in Saint Tammany Parish. And so, I understand what the residents are fighting for. You know, it's large estates, uh, very scenic, rolling hills. But I do see, we do have MHO, uh, in some large areas a certain distance from the highway. And I'm just, I'm just wondering to, to combat the repetitive need for residents to keep an eye on, you know, permits and, and come to these meetings if they're, and I guess this is a question for staff. Is there a, a special code that could, uh, be put on this highway? Scenic byway or something that, um, would, would establish this area and not require, um, us to constantly have to, to go through this process for, um, you know, for these residences to have to come repeatedly?
Yep. When someone would like to petition to apply for a zoning change, it is, you know, part of our duties to take it in if they wish to apply. We do our best to, you know, guide them in the right direction, and I always refer them to speak to their council representative. And that's the best we can do. We cannot.
I know that. I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is there, I know like on Highway twenty-one, it's a special designated corridor for scenic quality. Is there something similar? I know that same category would not work. But nothing comes to mind.
I, I mean, I would say the Highway twenty-one corridor is more stringent development regulations, but I see what you're getting at. I think to solve this issue that would stop people from applying for zoning changes, that was something that would need to be taken up and approached by the council representative for this area. They could certainly establish a moratorium that would stop us from accepting applications for these type of development. But until that happens, we have to accept them.
Okay, so, in other words, there isn't anything in existence yet that you guys are aware of?
No, ma'am, not that I know of.
Okay. Yeah, I find this a tough one. I, I understand both sides. It, it, but it does seem that the proposed site is well off the highway. Does it set a precedent? Maybe. You know, I see there's two areas in the vicinity, but maybe these are older, grandfathered in. This would be a brand-new one. But, um, I do, I do admit it is an incredibly scenic area, and I think it's in the best interest of this parish to, to keep it that way.
Anything else? Commissioner Arshamont.
Seems like I'm always getting the last pieces here, but
You got two, two following you.
Uh, I'm gonna push that button sooner, I'm telling you. No, uh, first of all, thanks again for everybody continually sticking with us here. But, uh, number one, was my colleague, one of my colleagues is saying, I don't necessarily agree with his comments. I think, um, we need to, uh, remember that there are two sides to everything. And even if you live in a, somewhere and you wanna protect it, you should argue. If you wanna build something, because it's your right, then argue, but it's both sides. Uh, the other thing is, um, how many people did, I know this, we only had one card for someone to come up and speak, but actually, if you could tell me by raising your hand, how many people are opposing, are there any audience?
Opposing what?
Opposing the, this, um, this zoning change. So, I just wanna know that, that there are a lot more people in here that are against it. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Troncoso.
The, um, the property is zoned, and it does not have manufactured housing overlay on it. Everybody has a right to ask for that zoning. But it is currently zoned that, and I believe it's probably appropriately zoned. And I, so I second the emotion, so that we can bring this to a vote, of Mr. Seager's motion.
Okay, and the motion was?
To approve.
What was your motion, John?
I made the motion to approve, yes.
To approve, okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Is that what, uh? Okay. All right. Please vote.
Motion to approve fails.
All right, those of you that, uh, wanted to see this go through, you have the right to appeal it to the council. And the appeal cards are, are over on the railing here. All right. We go to item three. Case is, uh, twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven ninety-two dash ZC. Existing zoning is NC four, Neighborhood Institutional District. Proposed zoning, uh, HC one, Highway Commercial District. Location parcel located on the northwest corner of Louisiana Location parcel located on the northwest corner of Louisiana Highway twenty-two and Grand Oaks Drive, Madisonville, Ward one, District one. It's two point zero eight two acres. Petitioners Grand Homes LLC, Jay Plou, and owner is Grand Homes LLC, Jay Plou. Staff?
The subject property consists of two point zero eight two acres and is currently undeveloped. The site abuts Grand Oaks Drive and the Grand Oaks subdivision and the Montgomery Terrace subdivisions to the north. Residential property that is zoned A two to the south. A commercial development to the east is zoned HC two and an undeveloped tract, zone NC four to the west. The purpose of the existing NC four district is to provide for the location of uses which provide a service at a neighborhood level but are appropriately located next to residential property. The purpose of the requested HC one district is to provide for the location of moderately scaled intense retail office and service uses. A change in zoning will allow for limited-scale highway commercial uses generally located along major collectors and arterials designed to provide services to a portion of the parish at the intersection of a state highway and a parish-maintained right-of-way.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Marone, you representing on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Paul Marone again, members of the commission, on behalf of Grand Homes and Mr. Jay Plou, who's here present in the audience with me. This request really stems out of a change that took place in the zoning of this property as part of the comprehensive rezoning. Back in two thousand and seven, when the property was zoned, it was originally zoned C one at that time, and in the comprehensive rezoning, which took place in two thousand and nine and ten, it was downzoned to NC four. Mr. Plou has been the owner all of that time and was not, had no idea, you know, wasn't aware of the comprehensive rezoning taking place, wasn't aware that, that the property had been downzoned. So his request this evening is simply to try to reestablish the zone that was originally given to the property or as near to it as we can. Obviously, we've had a change from ordinance five twenty-three that allowed for C one. Now the UDC is HC one. That would be the, the akin zone. So we are requesting that zone to reestablish what was in place back in two thousand and seven. I would also, also point out that we've got immediately to our east, an HC two parcel, and then across the street to the south from that, there's another large HC two parcel in the area. So an HC one in this mix, I would respectfully say, would not be inappropriate. This is Highway twenty-two. As I think staff report points out, this would be the area that would be suitable for HC one, a highway commercial zone along this stretch of Highway twenty-two. So we would respectfully request your consideration again to reestablish the highway commercial zone, the HC one, for the C one that was in place prior. Be happy to answer any questions when the appropriate time comes, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Marone. I have a card of Derek Groh. You wish to speak?
Is he against?
He's against.
Yeah, hi, Don, I'm Derek Groh. I'm, I actually currently live in two oh eight Grand Oaks, which is probably three or four houses from, from the zoning area, and I would just like to say that I would rather keep it the smaller zoning. They just built the hardware store on the other side of the street, and the hardware store is nice. Yes, the, the hardware store is nice, but I'm not really very familiar with what they plan on building in this area, and for what it sounds like, the, the building size could be substantially a lot bigger. And so I would, personally, I would rather keep it smaller, because we do have a tree buffer in the area where, you know, we don't get the road noise from Highway twenty-two, but they keep taking more and more buildings down, you know, constantly on that road. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Movav? That's not right, I'm sure.
Hi, I'm Edward Morris. Sorry for the handwriting. I live at two oh one Grand Oaks Drive, which is the property immediately next to this, this proposed zoning change, and just several considerations to take into account, when we purchased this, this home fifteen years ago, the, we were told that the intention was to leave this as a green space. Now, I'm sure many of you know that over the past fifteen years, traffic on Highway twenty-two has grown exponentially. My concern with this is, like some of the other people before, this, this wooded area does create a noise abatement area for the traffic that is currently on Highway twenty-two. Another concern that I have about this is that currently, I think probably about a mile to the, to the east, there's just, there's recently been a commercial building, strip mall, for lack of better words, put up with several buildings that are currently unoccupied. About another mile and a half to the west, there's also another series of, of commercial buildings that are unoccupied. So there's a lot of unoccupied commercial buildings in the general area around this property. So the concern is, is something going to be, be built here and nothing sell. The other, the other biggest concern that I have is currently the drainage issue. My, currently, the drainage from rainfall, about half of the water from my yard goes to the ditch in front of the, in front of the property. The other half of the water from, the runoff from my yard and several of the yards around me goes through that wooded area to the main ditch on Highway twenty-two. So it is, when it, when it gets to the point where we need to discuss drainage, that's definitely going to be a serious concern that I have. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. I do have another card, Ruth Lorio, but she did not wish to speak. Is that still the case?
No, I, I'll be...
Okay. Good evening.
Thank you for hearing me. My husband and I moved there in two thousand and eleven, and Jay Plou was our builder, and he, we were concerned about when we picked our lot, where to pick it, on which side of the street, and he told me that on the other side, that he owned the property and it was commercial, and we understood that. The property in, on my side that we, where we picked, I'm the third house from the street, from the back of the area we're talking about, I, you know, we were told that that would be a green space, and that's one of the reasons why we picked that side. I'm concerned that we now have on the right side of entering into our subdivision, a giant two-story True Value Hardware, with, you know, all kinds of things showing out on the street, big, big lifting machines and things, just, you know, it's just very commercial, and I'm just afraid that going down twenty-two, that more and more of these things are being put in front of our subdivisions, and I think it cheapens it, and I think it devalues our property. And, you know, it's not what I thought. I moved from Metairie to come to Saint Tammany because of, I love it, somebody said in the prayer, "A little bit like heaven," compared to, to the South Shore, and I feel like we're going to lose the trees, we're going to have all this noise from the highway, the highway is becoming very, very busy on twenty-two. So it was just a big shock to me when I saw that. When I first saw the sign, I thought it was somebody advertising for another area to, to build property, and when I realized what it was, I was concerned. So that's why I'm here tonight. I do oppose it because I don't really know what it's going to be. I was told that it would, would not be as big as the, the True Value, but it could be something smaller, more like a, a small church or a small, something that's not so commercial. And I don't know, I, I'm just saying, I don't understand the zoning, and I don't know, I haven't heard what is intended, something about a strip mall, and that's very, that's not telling me a whole lot. So anyway, I just wanted to come here tonight to give you my perspective.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak against? All right, I'm going to go to the rebuttal. Mr. Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. A few comments, you know, first, with regards to, you know, what's going to be built there, I mean, there are no immediate plans for any specific use. And with regards to the size of the building, I mean, in large respect, the size of the use there will be, will not necessarily be dictated by the zoning as much as by the size of the lot, because whether it's NC four or HC one, you've still got to meet your parking, you've still got to meet your retention requirements, your buffers, all of these other requirements go into that. So I respectfully suggest that ultimately, the size of the use is, is not really going to change very much between the two zones. Likewise, with regards to the concerns that Mr. Morris had about drainage, again, I'm not suggesting that drainage isn't important, because I know that drainage is important, and ultimately, when something is built here, whatever is built, it'll have to comply with all of the ordinances of the parish, but those ordinances are going to, going to be what they are, whether the zoning is HC one or NC four. It's not going to change the, the importance. The changing of the zoning to HC one doesn't reduce the importance of making sure that we, we meet all of the drainage requirements. So that's really not going to change as a result of, of your decision tonight. You know, there were some comments about this being green space and staying green space. I asked Mr. Plou, and, and he just, he doesn't, he doesn't believe that he ever said that this would be green space. These lots were zoned commercial at the same time that Grand Oaks was zoned. It was, it was all part of the same track. The rear was zoned A four for Grand Oaks, the HC two and, the C two and C one at the time were zoned out front along the highway, which is not uncommon. As you see, along major highways, you have commercial out front. And I would point out, and you've heard, I know you've heard this before, and you've heard this a number of times in this corridor, but I, but I think it rings true, and so I'm going to repeat it one more time, and, and that is that there has been in this area along Highway twenty-two, a lot of residential growth. We've got Gust Island, we've got Grand Oaks, we've got Rayford Oaks to the north, we've got Montgomery Terrace, we've got Timber Lane, we've got a lot of rooftops out there. At some point, we need to have some services, appropriate services, that are in that area, so that the people that are there don't have to drive all the way into Manaville to go to the hardware store, for example. There, so there, there is, I know it is, it's stressful to change and bring commercial to that area, and I, I respect and understand that, but, but there are benefits to that as well. And to the extent that we can bring some services to the area, I think it cuts down on, on some of the need for long-distance travels for everyday items. In this instance, as I said, back in two thousand and seven, this property was zoned C one, highway commercial. We are, we are simply seeking to reestablish that highway commercial. It is not inconsistent with the zones to our east and to our west, nor to our south adjacent to us. And again, I don't want to, don't want to belittle any of the concerns, because I respect them, but I do believe that HC one in this location is appropriate. It was appropriate when it was zoned originally, I think it's appropriate today, and I, and I urge you to consider it. And I would, I would leave you with just one other item that was, that was mentioned, and that was, that was the noise. This was always going to be a commercial track since two thousand and seven, and so at some point, it's going to be developed, and there's going to be some trees that have to be taken down. And so there is going to be a noise factor, but, you know, there, with if and when trees are taken down, you know, you will have the buffer of the buildings that are going to be in that, in that location. Is it, is it as good as having trees? Aesthetically, maybe not. I mean, certainly, we'd rather have the trees, but, but those buildings do afford, it's not, it's not an entree servitude. I'll just say that. It's not wide open. And so there are, there are some, there are some noise protections that will be there as well. So I urge you to reestablish the highway commercial zoning on this track. Mr. Plou had no idea that it had been changed, and it seems reasonable to bring it back to that HC one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the, uh, we'll go to the rebuttal on those that were against. Do you wish to speak? Okay, fill out a card, but go ahead and speak. State your name, please.
All developments along twenty-two that are new have left-turn lanes. We don't have one. We have a hardware store with an entrance to twenty-two, we have our entrance into our subdivision, and we have the subdivision next to us the other way, west of us, and there's no left-turn. So what happens is, in the morning, if you're trying to get out of our subdivision, it's almost impossible if you've got to make a left turn. Because the cars go, when someone slows down to make a left turn, because there is no lane, cars pass you on the shoulder, which is very dangerous. And we need that. If they're going to do this commercial thing, we need it. That's got to be part of this plan for safety. Forget the flooding, forget everything else, the beauty and all that stuff, but it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else wish to speak that's against? I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Arshman.
No speak, sir, sorry. I've got my question answered.
Okay, all right. Commissioner McInnis.
I know this area pretty well. I've worked on a project. It's a proposed wetland mitigation bank on the south side of Highway twenty-two, and this, there is a drainage on the west side of this proposed development or zoning change that goes under Highway twenty-two south, and in a half mile or so, it hits this property. I have a question for staff. Helen, it looks like the square footage is less with HC one than, than NC three? I mean, NC four? Am I reading that correctly? Sir, sir, you'll have to wait to speak.
Are you asking about the maximum building size?
Uh-huh.
So the maximum building size under NC four is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. If you go to the HC one, then it would allow for a twenty thousand square foot building size.
Oh, okay. I see you have a maximum of combined uses totaling nine thousand square feet in the comments.
This is for if you have an office warehouse.
That's for storage?
Just wanted to use if you have an office warehouse.
Okay, okay. I would, I will say, I think that, I, I will say that trying to come, this property that I'm used to going to is on the immediate west side of Gust Island Development, and it, it is extremely hard to, to make a left turn onto Highway twenty-two. And so the traffic is, is, is pretty amazing, and I would think that we need to take this into consideration in this setting. And I would think that we need to take this into consideration in this setting. So I would be hesitant to move it up to HC one.
Anything else?
I guess I'll make a motion to say, let's leave it as NC four. I guess my, my, I know y'all don't like this, but that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
I think you got a problem there. Diana? If you make a motion to deny, we're, we've had this discussion quite a bit.
If there's not enough votes to a motion to deny, then that means you take, the, the commission has taken no action. So you can vote to approve, but still vote to deny, just to move it forward, saying you just wanna move this.
I understand that, but I thought it had been clarified that we didn't have to follow that.
No.
I think it's confusing to the public.
So I have previously advised the commission, as Diana stated, that when you make a motion to deny, and a motion to deny does not get the requisite six votes, then you really haven't taken any action. So if there is a commissioner that has put a motion to approve on the floor, we should proceed with the motion to approve, and you can vote no if you want to deny the case on a motion to approve, but it's clear on the record, if there is a positive motion that's stated, even if you intend to vote against that zoning change or against that motion, that you are not precluded from making a motion to deny, you can make a motion to deny. We've had cases before where someone has made a motion to approve, there's not been a second, and then someone will make a motion to deny, and also not have a second, and then we're in this quandary. So I, it has been my legal advice that when there is a motion to approve on the floor, we should ask for a second for that motion before moving forward, but you're not precluded from making a motion to deny, but I would ask that a second be called for, so that we can have a clear motion on the floor before we have competing motions.
I will rephrase. I will make a motion to approve in order for me to vote no.
Is there another term we can use other than approve as a, of a motion?
When the new UDC comes into effect, it actually clarifies what the role of the commission is in terms of how you present this to the council, and you all will be making motions to approve as requested, make a motion to deny as requested, or make a motion to approve with certain stipulations. So the new UDC does clarify what you all, as a body, should be recommending to the parish council.
Okay.
And I will add that that allows for a number of services to the community. It's not like it's, we're keeping it residential. It is a commercial designation. Thank you.
Okay. So we go to Commissioner Gaines.
So I have a question. I, I need clarification from staff, from staff, please. On, on the zoning map, it says that the neighboring, the neighboring property is HC two, but on the plat design, it's, and in the staff comments, it says HC two, but on the plat design, it says HC one. So is it HC one or HC two?
On the east side
Yes.
of this property, it's HC two.
Okay, but the plat design says it's HC one, that's why I'm, I'm asking for the clarification.
The plat design, I'm, I'm sorry, what are your?
This, this plat design right here.
Oh, that was provided by the applicant.
Okay, that's what I'm just trying to figure out what, so that, the, the clarification I asked is because the request is for HC one zoning, why, Mr. Morone, if you could come and answer a question real quick, why you're asking for HC one versus the HC two, which is what is in keeping with the surrounding area? Yeah, so HC two is, is what the, the area has in its immediate vicinity, not HC one, so why the request for HC one versus HC two, which is in keeping what is, what the neighbor is?
Because HC one is less intense than HC two, and he's really just trying to establish the zone that was, that he had
Sure.
and that was removed from him. That's, he's not trying to upzone from that, he's just trying to reestablish the zone that he originally had on the property.
Okay, all right, great. So staff, what's the, what is the, the size limitation difference between HC two and HC one?
At, at this time, the maximum square footage of a building would be twelve thousand five hundred square feet. If going to HC one, it would go to twenty thousand square feet. However, the buffers requirements will be the same.
Okay, so is, is HC one is a smaller footprint than HC two?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, so what is the square footage of HC two?
HC two?
I thought so too, yeah. So it's actually gonna be smaller than the neighbor?
One would be.
HC two allows you to go to forty thousand square feet.
Yeah. But HC one would be twelve, twelve-five?
No, that'd be
Twenty.
more than twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, okay.
Okay.
So if you go to two, it's go, goes up dramatically.
Correct, that, but that's why I was trying to establish why it was, it was being asked for the way it was.
Okay.
That's, 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 I mean, I second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Narcisse.
I was gonna second the motion as well.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to approve, right?
Yes.
Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
All right, we go to item four, case is twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven ninety-four dash CC. Existing zoning is A one suburban district and an MHO manufactured housing overlay and RO rural overlay. Proposed zoning is A two suburban district, MHO manufactured housing overlay and RO rural overlay. Parcel located on the northwest side of Fitzgerald Church Road, Covington, Ward two, District six. It's one point four-three acres. The petitioner is Rodney Keating. The owner is Rodney Keating, it's Council District six.
The request is to allow for the creation of a one point forty-three acre parcel. If you notice, attached to your staff report, you can see that there is a survey that's been submitted. And this is basically, the objective is to be able to create parcel B, which is one point forty-three acres, and the total acreage right now is six point forty-six acres.
Okay, Rodney Keating? Are you Rodney?
Yes, sir. I apologize, my hearing's not very well, so I'm gonna let my daughter speak, but sitting here watching y'all tonight, I, I just wanna say thank you for the job y'all doing, 'cause I know it's a, it's a tough job, and, and I'm, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you doing? My name's Amanda Garner. So currently, as you see, the plots on six and a half acres, we wanna put it to one and a half acres, so that when, well, I wanna build my house, and so when we do that, I want to not have the whole six and a half acres in the mortgage, just in case something were to happen, and we'd have to put that up for collateral, I'd like to put in only an acre and a half. That's pretty much it. It's kinda short and sweet for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? I've got a card on Stephen Montgomery. That's you. You wanna speak for?
I do. The common thread here tonight is nobody wants growth by them, and, and every meeting here, so I appreciate y'all having to sort this out. But out where we're at, I own the adjoining property next to her. She's a fifth-generation owner of that property. It was a large farm, it was divided up between my grandmother, grandfather family down. So these are smaller farms now, but we have retained them as farms and farmland. The problem is, is with the, the rural overlay, is that now that we have children, we're fortunate to have children that wanna stay out there, wanna carry on the farm, they don't wanna live by Walmart, and we have to allow them to be able to build a home on the property. Well, if you have a nine-acre or six-acre property, you can't do that because of the overlay. The other challenge is, is that you have to strategically build so that you maximize your farmland. You, it, it's, it's nice to have a house in the middle of an open field, but that doesn't do you any good if you're a farmer. So I, I did that with my property next door, and like I said, we've had it for this many years, we're not, we're not trying to develop anything, we're just trying to make good use of the land that we do have for both farming and for the next generation of farmers, because no one's gonna commute to a farm. Right?
Do we have any other? Okay, so we're gonna close it to the public, bring it back to the commission? Oh, is there any opposition? Anybody wish to speak against? Okay, we're gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Who's first? Commissioner Seeger.
I'm very familiar with the, the family's been there forever, and I'm also familiar with the neighborhood. There are a, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there are seven MHOs within five hundred yards of this. I'd like to be able to see this young lady build a house, therefore I move to approve.
Okay, Miss Commissioner Arseneau.
Yes, I'm just seconding, seconding that motion.
Commissioner McInnis.
Would just like to say, I understand, talking about your, the mortgage, it's also easier to get homeowner's insurance if you have a, if you don't have acreage that goes with the house.
Okay. I wanna echo my Commissioner Seeger's comments. I'm very familiar with the, this, this area and the family and the history of that area as well. I think that it's, already has MHO overlay, and it's just continuing that at once, so there's no real change other than the subdivision. So I agree with you on that. Is there any other comments? Okay, please vote. What's that?
Motion to approve carries.
So you got that one done, huh? All right, the next one appears to be withdrawn. That's twenty thirty-four dash thirty-seven ninety-six. So that's, that one's withdrawn. We'll move on to item six, which is twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven ninety-seven dash CC. Existing zoning is A four, single-family residential district and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Proposed zoning is NC six and recreational, public and recreational district and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Partial located at the end of Dream Court, south of Louisiana Highway four thirty-three and Ward nine, District thirteen. It's seven point one five, one one five acres. Petitioner's Jeffrey Oaks. Owner is Cayman Properties LLC, Nick Tworow, it's Council District thirteen. Staff?
This site's... This site is currently known as the Dream Courts Mobile Home Park. Back in nineteen eighty, the site became the Sunbelt Campgrounds, and it consisted of multiple areas that were dedicated to larger recreational purposes. The owner of the adjacent RV per, park recently purchased this site, and the, the owner was brought into our offices through a series of code enforcement violations, in which we realized he was utilizing the park as a RV park and not a mobile home park. In discussions through how to correct those violations, we let the applicant owner know that the property is not zoned correctly to be an RV park, so that's the reason for this application today. If you all and subsequently the council grant approval of this requested zoning change, this is just the first of many requests that will need to come before the planning department and actually before the planning commission. Any kind of RV parks have minimum standards in which they have to meet for what will eventually be a re-subdivision, and will be seen through tentative preliminary and final.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Jeffrey Oaks, are you here?
Yes, sir, I am.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of the owners, Cayman Properties and Nick Tworow. This property that we're seeking the zoning change for was actually an RV park originally. In fact, it's my understanding from speaking with Jim Albert, who has been associated with the property for most of his life, that this was operated as an RV park from nineteen eighty until two thousand. It was briefly rezoned and used as a mobile home park from two thousand until Hurricane Katrina. After Katrina, it again reverted to use as an RV park, although it was still zoned as a mobile home park. When my client bought the property in twenty twenty-two, there was one abandoned mobile home on the property, everything else on the property was an RV. He didn't even realize that it was zoned as a mobile home park, which is why we've run into some issues with the planning commission. My client fully intends to bring the property into compliance in all respects, and the planning staff has informed us that the first step in that process is to get the property rezoned as an RV park, which is why we're here tonight. The operation, the continued operation of the property as a mobile home park is not feasible at this time. It adjoins salt bayou, it is a flood plain, and in order to properly have a mobile home on the site, it would have to be elevated an estimated ten to fourteen feet off the ground, which would be cost prohibitive, and I, I think it would probably be unsafe as well. So the existing zoned use is, is just not practical. My parent, my clients have spent approximately seven hundred thousand dollars of their own funds so far to improve this parcel and the adjoining parcel. They've spent an extraordinary amount of time, effort, and money to bring it up, rehabilitate it. At the time that he purchased it, it was in very poor condition, crime-infested, they've cleaned all of that out. I was on-site last week, it's, it's quite a nice parcel now, they've, they've done a great job there, and we'd like to continue that work. My, my client asked me to specifically mention the fact that he is, is really interested in developing the area for ecotourism. He believes that the setting with the salt bayou and the marsh would make a perfect opportunity to do that, and, and that's what we intend to do. I'm happy to ask any, or answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. We've got, any, anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? All right, we will, we have, let's see, Jeffrey Oaks?
Yes, sir.
That, that was you, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I've got a Patricia Exeth that's against. You wish to speak? Good evening.
Hi, Patricia Exeth. I own, my husband and I own two lots on Medley, right at the end. My parents owned that home since nineteen eighty, and I don't remember actually Dream Court ever being there. We had Pine Crest and the KOA forever, and that just seemed to appear out of nowhere, really. We've had a lot of issues with crime. There's always ambulances, fire trucks, police going back there all the time. There was recently a lot of work done that cleared a bunch of the wetlands and displaced a lot of wood ducks. My neighbor and I currently have to feed all, about thirty wood ducks every day. They basically come to my yard every day for food. They have no habitat to live there anymore. The drainage has, um, they claim it's improved it somewhat, but we noticed flooding when, of course, when the water comes in from the east, when it blows in from the east side. So I worry about the drainage, the traffic. We've had a lot of what I call predators out there, look like they're walking their dog from the RV park on our street. And, um, uh, they really eye our granddaughters until they actually step on the bus. They have a long walk all the way down Dream Court from Medley all the way to four thirty-three. And they're all girls. And so we don't feel right letting them walk to the school bus and wait for it, especially when it's still dark out. The fence used to be along, along there and some of it was in disrepair. And we all thought that they would put that up quickly, replace the wooden fence that was along there and it still has not been done. So that's, so that's a lot of our concerns about living in that general. We look at it every day. So yeah, it kind of disturbs us to know that they're gonna put more trailers in there and cut down and level out a lot more of the wetlands right there. And, um, that's about, we, we didn't, we don't like Dream Court even being back there, honestly. So we hope this doesn't pass.
Okay. Thank you. I've got one here and I'm not, uh, they didn't put a name on it. It's, uh, looks like the email address is Kitty Cat Lisa. I don't see one. Okay. And Eric Knower. Just mark the other.
I'm sorry, what?
You just marked others. You wish to speak and, and...
Oh, no, against.
Against, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. Yeah. Good evening, Erica Knower. So I would like to echo what Ms. Engeseth just previously stated. The property was in disrepair whenever Mr. Two-Roe purchased the property. Both of the properties actually were in incredible disrepair. And what made myself and my husband call code enforcement was Mr. Two-Roe had, um, he had cut down a lot of trees in our drainage right of way. And then he brought in about a hundred trucks of fill to make the pad that he talks about in his statement for the excavator. The pad's still there, all the fill's still there. And the improvements to the drainage that he discusses in his statement, we have not seen them. Our ditches are full a lot. We did have a recent rain event and the drainage, it, it did eventually drain. However, the drainage does take forever. This particular property, the one that is requesting the zoning is, um, it's very critical to our drainage. We, we don't have any other drainage for our street except for through that little wetland area that he's talking about on, on that one side of the property, the part that he cut down and added all the fill to. So, um, yeah, the drainage isn't being expedited. The culverts were never closed off and cleaned out. There's no fence. We, I do not let my daughters walk that street to go to the bus stop anymore because Mr. Two-Roe hasn't added the fence. So it's, my children are scared to walk to the bus stop. I have tried to get the bus stop changed, to no avail. They won't do it. So yeah, I do have another resident who would like to speak as well, so.
Okay, I need a card. You got, you got five minutes?
She's coming.
Okay. Just, Erin, she's got her card.
My husband and I live on Dream Court. When you go from four thirty-three and turn onto Dream Court, we're the first house. Then we have a couple lots in between, then my mother's house with the lot. And then on the corner is Erica and her husband. So we're right there on Dream Court. And what they say, um, the, I don't mind RVs. My, we have a camper, we go camping. But the traffic in the past few years has gotten worse and there's dump trucks, there's work trucks, there's RVs, potholes. The speed limit's fifteen. I think most people go forty, fifty. The other day, a car absolutely went probably forty miles an hour, totally in reverse back the whole street. Uh, just some different drivers back there. My concern when it says public, I don't know whether that means, is it open just to the people that live in the RV park? Or is this gonna be if they develop any type of recreational areas or whatever it said in the little handout? Is it open to the public? And the traffic is already so crazy. The RV park or the trailer park across the street from Dream Court has an entrance that goes to the back. I didn't know whether they would be developing that as an entrance or if Dream Court state is the only entrance. It's, it's, traffic is, it's pretty crazy. Drainage, we also have noticed a difference in the past couple of years with our ditches and our front yard and the side yards flooding. The fence issue, there are a lot of people, we're right across the street. So there's a lot of people that have their dogs. At my mother's house, we had a couple of people parking in her driveway because they didn't have room. I guess they came across the street and just parked in her driveway. So I, I think the fence, the traffic and possibly if they did make, we heard possibly some recreational, I don't know whether they would have a sound stage or something, but maybe some type of sound barrier. How recreational would it be? You know, if they have full, open ability to do anything back there. We're probably, I don't even know, a little over a block long to get back into the trailer park from four thirty-three. And it's just, it's almost like an interstate sometimes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any other cards. So I'm gonna go to rebuttal. You're up first. Good evening.
The first thing I'd like to do is address the fence issue. As the staff mentioned and as I alluded to, that we, we ran into some problems because we were not in compliance. One of the things that we weren't in compliance with is we didn't have the appropriate work permits. And so we were hit with a cease and desist from the parish and we were told not to do any further work until we were brought into compliance. So we do intend to complete all the improvements that we've been working on, including building the fence. We're just not currently able to until we get all these, these issues straightened out with the parish. So the fence will be built. Some of the drainage work has already been done. There is more to do. Much of the fill dirt that was mentioned was placed on the site in order for us to get the heavy equipment back there that is necessary to continue to clean out the bayou and clean out the waterways to finish the drainage work that we've started. We can't do any of that while we're under the, the stop work order. So all of that is underway. All of that will be completed. We just can't do it until we get the thing approved by the parish. And we can't do that until we've got the zoning issue straightened up. As far as the work that's been done to improve the drainage, the original pipes that we have found on site were approximately two feet in diameter. We replaced them with eight foot diameter culverts. The drainage has improved dramatically since that time. There was a pond that was completely silted over. That pond is now clear flowing water. And we believe that once we're allowed to complete the work, the entire property will show similar improvements.
Okay, thank you. Those of you that are against, you're in rebuttal time now if you wish to speak.
I'm confused. Is, is he saying he, he can't put up a fence without a permit? Because there was a fence there for many, many years, the whole time it was KOA. I'm just saying. The drainage issue is a whole nother thing. But all that, that fill dirt that he brought in, that's this humongous mound that's there to park an excavator is, is causing the drainage. I mean, he's got the water directed around it into a ditch that stays full. So I don't see, and that pond that he was talking about, it used to have water and alligator and duck, you know, all kind of wildlife. And now it's, it's, yeah, it's not very, I'm sorry, I didn't have this planned out, what I was gonna say, but.
You need to get closer to the mic if you're gonna continue to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I didn't, I wasn't planning on speaking, actually. This is just all, you know. But that, that fence should have been put up a long time ago. We're not trying to cohabitate, I mean, have these people who are in and out, they're trans, they're, they come and go all the time. We've had pets come up missing. We don't want our children to come up missing. They come, they walk down our street and, and go. We've had a lot of more traffic coming through there because they get lost, you know, going, trying to find Dream Court and leaving it. And they, it, we used to not have any traffic on our road. Our kids could play out there, ride their bike and everything without any worry. Now we've got people driving really slow and looking in our yard. And when our kids are outside, it, we, it causes a red flag. So we're just more concerned about the more traffic and, and, and problems it brings, especially not having that fence there also. And people walking their dogs, which upsets our dogs when they bring them down our street to walk them instead of staying in the confinement of the RV park. And they have a little, used to have a little pit, I don't know, potty spot fenced in and that disappeared, I believe, didn't it? And so now they're walking them everywhere. We all are pet owners also, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Hey, the, the eight and a half foot culverts that they put in are directly at the end of the drainage run. I guess is how you phrase that. So in order to get to that eight and a half foot culvert, our water has to go through the standard parish culvert. What's the size of that, two and a half feet, one and a half foot diameter or something? So it has to go through that to get to that eight and a half foot. So it's, yay, he put it in, but it's not, it's at the wrong spot. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's rebuttal on both sides. I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Arseneau.
Yeah, this is for staff first. Number one is, this is a zoning approval, you know, this is for zoning approval. But he still is gonna, the developer and the property owner still has some standards they have to still do and some things that they still have to check even before it can be plant, in, in the planning stage, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I move to ex, uh, to approve the zoning.
Okay. Robert Trinacosa.
Yes, um, the gentleman, there seems to be a concern about the impact of transience of what's, the operation right now is one of our main problems. What are you gonna do? And this, in a way, is outside of the zoning scope and, and to some degree. But what improvements and what things operationally and otherwise are you gonna do to improve the overall safety of that area for the permanent residents in the area?
Well, sir, I believe a lot of that has already been done. And as I mentioned, when my client bought the property two years ago, it was crime infested. There were a lot of apparent drug dealers. There were a lot of police calls to that area. My client has come in and run those people off. And the place is now being rented out to legitimate RV owners and tourists.
Is there a specific sane, screening process that you have that's different than what was operating before?
I'm not sure what sort of process there was in place before. But my client does have a screening process and he does not allow any undesirable elements to remain on site. And certainly we intend to continue that.
Do you have, do you have an operating specifications and or criteria relative to who you rent to? Or just anybody that has an RV can come in and rent?
If you'll give me just a second, I'll find out the answer to that for you.
Okay. In the meantime, I'd like to ask the lady in the back, Believe and, Believe You Can. I didn't catch your name. So you're, how do you perceive the safety issue and the transience and things that are taking place? Has it improved?
In some degrees, yes, and in some degrees, no. A lot of his residents, um, they are transient and they stay, um, they're not long-term. Right, as the nature of his business.
Right.
There has been a couple of residents that I have had to call the police on myself. There is one in particular who likes to drive around and watch my daughters mow the lawn. So, um, so I'm constantly having to go outside whenever they're outside.
But I guess the question is, has it improved?
Not to the degree that, um...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
I'd like a motion, uh, second the, the motion.
To approve.
To approve, yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. You got an answer?
Yes, sir. There are policies in place. My client insists that RVs be less than ten years old. If the RV is older than ten years, he requires a picture. He also requires proof of insurance and proof of ownership before he will rent a space.
And I guess a question for either Emily or the staff relative to, is there an occupational license that the parish gives relative to this that has any specifications about how they operate? Or anything like that?
There is an occupational license process that goes through the parish sheriff's office in which we would issue a zoning approval letter to say they're compliant with our ordinances. We are not there yet.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, Commissioner Northseas.
I'm looking at the area. It sounds, it looks consistent with everything else. Speaking earlier, you mentioned keeping it as a mobile home park would be not conducive because of the elevations and things like that. Furthermore, the improvements, based on what you guys have said, what you ladies have said, is that it is improving a little bit. It took years to get to that point. He's had it for what, a year?
Two years.
Two years. And he started working on it. Maybe it'll continue to get better. I, I see that as a step in the right direction, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay, Commissioner Seager.
I'm very familiar with this area. I spend two or three days a week every winter in the Fritchy Marsh there. I've passed this area since I was about five years old. I've never seen it in such disrepair as it was two or three years ago with the drainage problems and the, uh, the debris. And it is a lot better. It is, it has to help the drainage in the neighborhood. It can't do anything but, um, there was so much stuff in there that water was impeded. And I call for a vote, Mr. Chair.
I got two more people, commissioners.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Commissioner McGinnis. Anything else, Tom?
I do. I have a question for staff. Will, will this zoning change allow more spaces than are currently there? I mean, I'm seeing quite a number on the aerial already. It's just gonna allow a lot more campers than mobile homes?
This is all based on a minimum standard. So basically, we have standards to follow. And, you know, it's not necessarily a yes or a no answer because it has to meet, they're gonna have to submit plans. It's gonna come back in front of you, in front of the planning commission. There are several... Uh, there are several steps to go through before it is possible to, you know, grant a, a potential approval. And as I said, it, it has to go through the tentative preliminary area and final, just like a regular subdivision. So, it's not like if the parcels that are cu- currently existing are permitted per se, so...
Okay. The, um, the, all the, uh, fill that's there, I'm assuming no more work can happen until it goes through planning? That's correct, yes. That's correct, okay. I, I just wanna, um, point out that I think we've had, uh, another campground in this area, and, and they took a lot of steps to have, um, protections in place, because, you know, as we know, when storm surges happen, it just washes this whole area away. And that's what happened before. And so, in the planning, um, I'm just wanna advise your, the representative, um, that, Mr. Oaks, that, um, you know, all the infrastructure needs to be where it can withstand, withstand so, storm surges. And we're getting so many people, combined with the other campground, that it, it's not gonna be feasible for people to evacuate their campers with the, with the traffic. So, um, uh, even though you may be allowed a certain number of lots, I would not go for the maximum in planning, because, um, I don't think it's, it's gonna be, um, advisable at this site. So, um...
Thank you. If I may address that.
Come, come to the mic.
Uh, I've, I've checked with the, my client, the owner regarding his intention. Uh, his, his intention is not to add any additional sites. But, and certainly, if, if we did change our minds about that, we would work with the planning commission to make sure that everything was properly approved. But, we don't currently have any intention to do so.
Yes, sir, but we can also consider health, safety, and welfare of citizens and, and have additional requirements.
Yes, ma'am, and, and we'll comply with any requirements that are imposed on us.
Okay. That was, I just wanted to bring that up, thank you.
Anything else, ma'am, now? Okay. Commissioner Arsima.
Yeah, I just wanted to come back and circle around, and first of all, commend the owner, the property owner, I know he's here. I appreciate you taking the effort to make the change, 'cause I'm familiar with that property as well as when, uh, Commissioner Seager was talking about. I remember that property, I remember the police calls, I remember all the time what was happening out there. So, I commend you for the effort and continue to do that. Uh, the other part is, is, I, I think it's important that our neighbors and our families and those that live around areas that, that maybe could be a little risky, to stay true to what you want, you want safe community. So, if you have some issues there, please make them public. Even though this zoning could be approved, and they can build what he needs to put there, doesn't mean you need to quit, because, uh, I remember that area, and it has changed. So, don't stop doing that, there's other avenues we can do that with, and, uh, make sure people listen to you and get out there and take care of any crime that is going on. But, I just wanted to come back and commend the owner for taking the effort, because it's, it was atrocious.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
All right, we go to, uh, item seven, case is 2024-3800-ZC. Existing zoning is A3 Suburban District, proposed zoning is A3 Suburban District and RO Rule Overlay. Location partial located on the northwest corner of Silver Road and Louisiana Highway 433, east of Joseph Road, being 59509 Louisiana Highway 433, Slide L, Ward 9, District 11. It's 1.77 acres, the petitioner is Alexander Nguyen, and the owner is Alexander Nguyen, it's Council District 11. Staff?
This is currently a 1.77 acre parcel that is on A3 Suburban District. There is an existing single-family residence on the property, and per the petitioner's application, the objective of the request would be to obtain a rural overlay to be able to apply for a short-term rental permit.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Nguyen?
Good evening. Greetings zoning commissioners, my name is Alexander Nguyen, and my home is located at 59509 Highway 433, located District 11. I would like to respectfully request my property to be rezoned from A3 Suburban District to A3 Suburban District with rural overlay. The reason for my request for rezoning would be for the ability to do short-term rentals while I'm away. My property is approximately 1.78 acres, I do not have any nearby neighbors, I'm not in the residential neighborhood, and no one would be bothered by my tenants in any way due to the distance and location of the property. I also want to share some numbers with you. I went back to my air, my past Airbnb bookings, and these numbers kinda surprised me. Out of the forty-four bookings that I had, the occupancy tax that was collected came up to $6,677. That was collected by Airbnb, given to the parish. I consider myself an ambassador to St. Tammy and hope to get your blessings for the rezoning. If not, I will respect the decision of the board regardless of the outcome, and will obey all rules and regulations, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone, you wanna speak in favor? You need to come to the mic. Have you filled out a card?
I didn't, I arrived late.
Okay, we'll get that in a minute.
Um, good evening, I, um, I'm not a for or against, but I had questions, just for clarification. My family is actually on Silver Road, uh, from Joseph all the way through, I am fourth generation. And, um, that entire area is owned by, by relatives. Just a couple of questions that, Mr. Nguyen, if you would be able to, to respond. Where, one was, um, I was noticing on the, the application that there is, eh, an intent to, um, is there an intent to build an additional structure, or just to use the, the single re, single-family residence that's already there? Uh, the second thing is a question of the, the number of anticipated guests per rental, just because we're next to, we're down from the school, and we're noticing over time that people are coming off of Thompson Road and cutting through Silver to get back to Highway 90, and we've been having some dumping. So, there's a concern about just this increase on Thompson, and I think that would also go to the, the owner being able to implement, um, procedures, uh, with the guest. The other questions would be the projected number of rentals per month, to be able to confirm that access to the property really is on Thompson Road and not Silver, because the property sits on the corner of Thompson and Silver. And then, also to confirm that the rental really will be, um, short-term rental, the length of the rentals, uh, per, uh, booking, and to make sure that these rentals are not also for events.
Okay, we'll, we'll have to...
That's a lot. That's a lot.
You didn't have it, uh, you didn't tell me if we were for or against, and, and I understand what you're asking, okay? But, uh, there's other folks that may have, uh, questions.
Yes.
Uh, and may, may wanna do a presentation as well.
Okay.
And then, we'll go back to Mr. Nguyen, uh, to get some of these answered, okay?
It was really just to give an opportunity to answer, um, yeah, okay, all right.
Okay. All right, anyone else wish to speak against? All right, Mr. Nguyen, we'll go back.
This is for.
For or against?
I don't know where it was. For, okay. Anyone else wanna speak for? All right, now we can go to against, and the, the lady already, uh, made her presentation, but we've got some cards here on, uh, against, so, uh, John Vincent?
I am not John, I am Nancy Rich. But I think the, the neighbors have decided that since I am the most immediate neighbor, that, that I should come first. In Mr. Nguyen's opening statement, he said this is his home. But in fact, it is not his home, it is his second home. He does not live in this home, he lives in another home in New Orleans. I believe it's New Orleans, I know it's somewhere in New Orleans, maybe the West Bank, it might be JP, I'm not entirely sure. But he has never lived full-time in this home. It has only ever been a short-term rental. He also stated that he does not have neighbors. But when I'm sitting on my front porch, because of the land that he cleared to bring in his RV to house more people, I can directly see his RV, and if his RV wasn't there, I would be able to see his home. So, he does have neighbors. He doesn't know any of his neighbors, except for me, because we've run into each other. He's never lived in this home. Second, I would like to talk about the purpose of the rural overlay. And I'm gonna read it directly from the statute. "It is to encourage the maintenance of the rural countryside, to preserve the forests and other undeveloped lands away from areas of population growth." This is 1.77 acres, one and one-quarter miles from a Walmart, a Sam's, and a Home Depot. This is not in the spirit of the rural overlay. I have a small homestead on our 4.6 acres. It would be good with me if we had a rural overlay. But I don't believe that is in the best interest of our land or our neighbors. But if at any point, I wanna use our land in a different way, I can't. I'm not gonna come to this council, I'm not gonna ask my neighbors to change this zoning. I'm gonna move to a different property so that I can be a full-time farmer. This is not in the spirit of the rural overlay. His intentions are not to retain his traditional way of life as stated in the statute. And I do not support this change at all. That is it.
Okay, thank you. Benjamin?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, thank you for staying so late, and I appreciate it. I would like to state that the property is unkempt and trash is typically left in the driveway. And that would be my objection, I am against. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Donna McDonald?
I'll defer to Lee.
Okay.
Good evening, Lee Deming, I live at 34057 Bayou Liberty Road, and I do represent the Bayou Liberty Association and its 250 members. We categorically oppose the rezoning of this property. My, my membership consists of people who reside on Bayou Liberty and Bayou Parquet and the nearby areas. This is the nearby area. And this particular property is, um, is surrounded by A2 or A3, and across from it is an elementary school, Lake Castle. And, if, if you recall, eh, the, the area, Silver Road is a very narrow, two-lane street that has deep ditches on both sides. And, and Thompson Road is, is a rather large, two-lane road, uh, that would buttress, uh, the, the corner of this property. Now, I caution everybody, and, and let me just say that I apologize to the commissioners who have been here previously and are not new to the area, because I've already made this appeal previously. I would like to hand out some information to the commissioners. And what this does, it simply is very easy to look at, it profiles some, but not all, of the possibilities that can be done on this property if it were approved for a rural overlay. And rural overlay, by the way, is a very innocuous sounding term, but it really is euphemism for commercialization. The, the, the area obviously is only 1.77 acres, and it's not gonna be conducive for a landing script, but rural overlay, and I, I, I'm only giving you this information because I want you to be cognizant that it really does convert a heretofore purely residential area into a commercial enterprise. Now, and my, my concern, and my argument, is not so much for a rural overlay, it actually details one of the components of the rural overlay, which is a short-term rental. And I can tell you, we've dealt with this on Bayou Liberty, Ad infinitum, for literally a decade. We've had difficulty with these enterprises, there have been multiple code enforcement violations, we've had to contact the sheriff's office, office on multiple occasions because of what goes on in, in short-term rentals. And, and the issue is this, people buy or rent these, these short-term rental units at enormous prices. They, they may pay $1,000, $2,000, or $3,000 a day for a weekend to rent these places. When they do that, they assume they can do virtually anything. The other side of that coin is the residents, and indeed, the elementary school, which is right across from it, don't know who is gonna be there on any given day or weekend. It could be a convicted felon, it could be a child molester, could be a rapist, you never know. And, and that is a huge problem for any purely residential area. I also wanna comment that right now, the short-term rental issue has been decided in the 22nd Judicial District Court in St. Tammany that they are strictly commercial, and they do not belong in residential areas. This has been appealed to the First Circuit Court, Louisiana First Circuit Court in Baton Rouge. It has been upheld that these are strictly commercial entities that do not belong in a residential area, and actually, uh, uh, they, they are in opposition to the UDC, the Uniform Development Code. This has just recently been decided, by the way. It's a dangerous precedent, in my opinion, to allow anything like this to occur in a purely residential area. I, I just want to also comment that the staff report that I read suggests that the idea of converting this property to a short-term rental is inconsistent with the character of the existing residential area, which is A2 and A3, and also with the ecological sensitivity of the region. Think that's pretty straightforward. So, I respectfully request that you deny this petition for rezoning for all these reasons, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak, uh, against? Yes, sir.
John Vincent, 21573 Soul Drive at Vito Springs, I'm in District 11. I'm speaking on behalf of these people, because I share the same issue. What can you do on a rural overlay of two acres that you can't already do in A2 and A1, or A3 and A2? I'm A2, I have almost the same-sized lot, I have a huge garden. I cut my lot, so I'm in the middle of trees, I've got woodlands. So, why a rural overlay? I've been a professional developer, economic and community developer, for over thirty years. I was Entergy Louisiana's first. I was Entergy Louisiana's first community development manager. Rural overlays, along with some other different classifications, are a problem and shouldn't be allowed. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to, oh, okay, Donna?
Donna, Donald, three-five-zero-seven-five Oak Ridge Avenue. All of you all are familiar that we're in the process of changing the UDC. The UDC is going before our parish council. Eliminates STRs as a rural overlay and allows it strictly in commercial divisions. It is a commercial entity. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Nguyen, we'll go to rebuttal.
I didn't know everybody felt this way, I would like to redraw my rezoning application. Sorry, I apologize if y'all felt that way, and we could redraw this right now. I apologize for any inconvenience. I didn't know y'all felt that way.
So what's your intent?
Cancel the application?
Pardon?
Can I cancel it?
Yeah, you can, you withdraw it.
I could withdraw, I'll happily withdraw my application for the rezoning.
Okay, Helen, is that, or Erin?
Thank you for your help, Sarah.
Okay, do we need a motion or anything on? I don't think we do because it's being withdrawn by the, okay. All right. All right, Mr. Arsman want to make a comment, so I'll.
Yeah, just real quick, uh, just for officially, uh, from the, uh, commissioners here, but thank you for actually listening to that part of it and actually taking the, uh, willingness to withdraw, okay, because, uh, we appreciate that.
John, you have anything?
No, I'm good. I don't need to be heard.
All right, so that item has been withdrawn. All right. We go to, uh, item eight. Case is twenty-two-four dash thirty-eight oh seven dash CC. The existing zoning is A four, single-family residential. Uh, proposed zoning is A eight, multi-family residential. Partial located on the west side of Hoover Drive, north of US Highway one ninety, uh, east being one forty-one Hoover Drive, Slide L, Ward Eight, District thirteen, it's one point three one acres. The petitioner is Brian Silva, uh, the owner is NBJS Real Estate LLC. It's Council District, uh, thirteen. Staff? Go on.
This is a zoning change request to, um, rezone the property to A eight, multi-family residential district. The site is currently developed with a twenty-four unit apartment complex that is considered as illegal non-conforming use. The existing apartment complex has been in place, uh, for, you know, more than likely, uh, from at least nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, this is the furthest that the Google Earth Satellite View would bring us. The building was recently permitted for an interior model, it was granted occupancy in twenty-twenty-two. However, it was noted by staff prior to occupancy that if the building whatever sustained any damage exceeding more than fifty percent of the replacement valuation of the building, it would not be able to be rebuilt as an apartment complex, and, but, uh, the site would have to be brought up into compliance with the A four, single-family residential district. So this is the objective of the zoning change request, is to bring the existing site in compliance with the appropriate zoning.
Okay, is Brian Silva?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Silver had a medical emergency in his family, so he asked me to come.
Just state your name and your address, please.
Rick Beto, my address is twelve twenty-five West Presidents' Drive, Covington, Louisiana. Uh, Mr. Silver is the principal owner of the LLC that owns the property at issue. And as the staff report stated, uh, the property has existed since, you know, at least the nine, late nineteen eighties. Uh, it was a twenty-four unit apartment complex, Mr. Silver purchased it in, uh, two thousand twenty-one, and he has taken extensive renovations to the interior and exterior. Uh, he's improved the drainage, he's added lighting and security. Uh, during the permitting process, which I believe is completed now, uh, it's staff had advised him that uh, this multi-residential unit was in an A four zone, and it, uh, and if there ever was a catastrophic loss, he would be prohibited from rebuilding it as a multi-unit, uh, apartment complex because it's not zoned that way. Uh, and Mr. Silver wants to, you know, ensure that, uh, his investments, uh, stay good. Uh, he wants to, uh, be able to have incentives to keep improving on the property, and if there is a catastrophic loss, that he could rebuild it, uh, within the zone use of an A eight. I believe that matters already been before the parish council where they provided him a waiver from the multi-unit, multi-residential moratorium that the parish enacted back in nineteen, in twenty-twenty-two, and I think it is attached to the, uh, staff's report. Mr. Silver, he did provide me, and I don't know if this is admissible, it's a letter from his neighbor that lives behind the apartment complex, Sandra Howard at, uh, her address is one four zero, um, Moro Drive, which is immediately behind the complex, and she's lived there for twenty years. And she stated that she really didn't have a high regard for the previous owners because they failed to keep the place kept, uh, and there were problems with drainage, after big rains, all the water drained through her property, and she had, and she, and and she's happy now that Mr. Silver, the present owners, have put in extra drainage and drains, and, uh, including the additional security, and now all the water flows away from the property and towards, uh, Hoover Drive instead of Moro Drive. And I don't know if this is something, I only have one copy, I don't know if there's something I can give to you to add to your report? And I think I'll just reserve, uh, my time for rebuttal at this point, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, anyone else wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I'll close it to the public and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Arsman?
Yeah, I, um, actually, I'd, I'd like to approve, uh, the zoning. Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, okay. Commissioner Seager?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seager. All right, we got a motion and a second. I do have a couple of questions. How many handicap spaces and, and have you given any thought to that? I mean, the lower floors would have to be, you know, where the handicap would be located, and, uh, the other thing is, what about trash pickup and water and sewer, is that on, that's not, couldn't be on city water?
Unfortunately, I don't.
Pardon?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information with me tonight, I would have to ask Mr. Silva.
Okay.
Uh, all I understand is that, uh, since, uh, he's purchased the property, uh, trash and drainage and security and matters like that have improved drastically according to, uh, what's the, and the, attested by his neighbor. But I will forward that information to him.
Okay, well, I mean, it looks like it could be a help to a lot of the handicapped people that may be in that area. It's just something that he would have to, you know, investigate, and, uh, I know that the water has to either be on a community system or, because it can't be on the city of Slide L, or you'd be in the city of Slide L, so.
Mr. Chairman, we, we can help provide some of the, uh, answer to your questions if you'd like.
Okay.
So if you look at the site plan, which it's, might be a little difficult to read, but there's a sewer lift station on the property. So that provides, um, sewer. Um, I don't know if there's central water, but we can, uh, we're trying to pull the building permit to answer that question. Uh, I only see one, um, handicap parking space.
Yep.
Um, so I, I understand that, that this may be a concern, um, so, but the, the site plan was approved also, uh, you know, the fire marshal reviewed the plans, so I, I understand that this was probably the minimum that was required, and this is what was provided. Um, what was your third question?
Third question, uh, was, you know, the trash pickup, uh, and the water and sewer, and you've answered both water and.
So trash pickup, well, you know, the, the property has been, I guess, restripped or redesigned to make sure that there's sufficient space to be able to, you know, go around and, um, and come back, come to the rear to be able to pick up the trash, so.
I would guess that they're gonna put a, what do they call it, the, like, a, a twenty cubic yard dumpster or something like that on there, or? You don't know?
I was called in at the last, last minute.
Okay. Helen, there, and y'all have any?
Yeah, we, um, I'm trying to see if, uh, there's one on the, on the site, um. I'm sure that there's a, a space, this is a, is, this is a raised building? This is a raised building, so there's, it's potentially under the building as well.
Okay. So there'd be individual, uh, trash cans for?
If there are three or more trash cans or a dumpster, then they have to be in compliance with our regulations, which require a seven-foot opaque fence. They've provided a traffic circulation plan, which shows there's enough room for a truck, uh, garbage truck to get through the site, but they did not indicate where the dumpster would be on the floor.
All right, so, uh, that's, that's a question that the gentleman will have to get some answers on, but by the same token, it's not gonna stop us from approving this, and, and, uh, y'all will have it in the record that, uh, they'll have to, you know, comply. Okay? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I think I'm missing one, oh, Phil's gone, sorry. Motion to approve carries.
Thank you. All right, item nine, case is twenty-two-four dash thirty-eight-ten dash ZC. Existing zoning is A one suburban district, RO rural overlay, and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Proposed zoning is A one A suburban district, RO rural overlay, and MHO manufactured housing overlay. Partial located on the south side of, of, uh, Louisiana Tongue Road, east of, uh, Middle Road, Covington, Ward Two, District Six. Petitioners Tammy R. and Mark, uh, Victorino, and the owner is Tammy R. Victorino, Council District Six. Staff?
Yes, the objective is to rezone to A one A, if you notice, there is a survey attached to your, uh, the zoning change request, and the objective is to be able to create the parcel A one A that is shown on the attached survey.
All right, thank you. Mr. Victorino or Ms. Victorino? Pardon?
Sorry, uh, Mark Victoriano, current address is four-four-two-five-nine Kendallwood, Hammond, Louisiana. I, uh, I purchased the three acres from my parents, uh, in the hopes to build a single-dwelling family home to take care of my parents who are aging. My mother is eighty-five and my father is eighty-nine years old. They are connected to the property at the sixteen and Somat Acres.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak against? I want to close it to the public and bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Narcisse.
Cut and dry, I say yes. I make a motion. To approve.
To approve, okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Narcisse, uh, Commissioner Arsman?
Well, since I haven't been able to speak this evening, I'll go ahead and second that.
Listen, Neil, you're next. Okay, all right, so we got a motion and a second to approve, please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
All right, so the item ten is case twenty-two-four dash, uh, thirty-eight-eleven dash ZC. Existing zoning is NC two, in, indoor retail and service district. Proposed zoning is ED two, higher education district. Location, partial located on the east side of Louisiana Highway twenty-five, south of River Road and north of Johnson Street being seven oh five six zero, Louisiana Highway twenty-five. Covington, Ward Three, District Two, it's one point zero four three acres. The, the petitioner is Holy Family Academy, Mark Stevens. The owner is Geraldine Singer, Council District Two. Staff?
The site is currently developed with a structure that was originally utilized as a school building for the adjacent St. Gerthred, uh, church, and it has been converted into a single-family residence, however, it's currently vacant. And the request is to rezone to ED two to basically reuse the same building or, um, basically renovate it to become a school again.
Okay. Do we have, uh, Geraldine Singer or somebody representing?
Oh, I think he's, you sure stood the ground.
Good evening.
Um, Mark Stevens. Actually, the, um, the property, actually, Holy Family has closed on the property, so it now belongs to Holy Family Academy. Holy Family Academy is, um, a, a hybrid homeschool currently located on North Jefferson Avenue. Uh, the building that we're leasing currently is, is being foreclosed on, so we're look, we're looking for a new home. So we were approached by a property adjacent to this piece of property that wanted to sell to us. It's, it's zoned highway commercial two, and we weren't gonna need to rezone that one. This piece came up for sale, uh, so, and it's adjacent, and it would be, being a, already a schoolhouse, something that we could use as part of our school, so we purchased it and applied for rezoning.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, well, since you were the last citizen here, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it back to the commission, Commissioner John Gaines.
Uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Tom Seager?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Seager. All right, we got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion to approve carries.
Thank you. All right, new business we don't have any, old business we don't have any. Did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we have to sing Happy Birthday to Mitchell.
Oh, okay.